Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Wow, that microphone sounds loud tonight. But welcome to the City of Winter Springs regular city commission meeting of Monday, June 23rd, 2025. Christian, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kevin McCann.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Cade Resnick.
Present.
Commissioner Paul Diaz.
Present.
Commissioner Victoria Bruce.
Present.
Commissioner Sarah Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Mark Caruso.
Here.
Acting City Manager Brian Donegan.
Here.
And City Attorney Anthony A. Garganese.
Here.
Thanks.
Great, and I believe we're going to have an invocation by our good friend Bob Melhorn. If we could all stand and then we'll follow with the pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Good friend. Holy one, on an evening such as this, we're gathered in the city hall here in Winter Springs, a city we love, but our minds are also far away as we are digesting the news of the hostilities between our nation and the nation of Iran. Lord, we are praying for all in the armed forces, men and women who are stationed in the Middle East. We pray for their safety. We're praying for families here in Winter Springs who are anxious to receive news. And, Lord, we are praying that our world might be a safer place. Lord, we think globally, but we act locally this evening. And as residents and new enterprises come to our city, we ask for the wisdom to make decisions that will prosper the place that we love. This evening, Lord, we're holding in our hearts our city manager, who's had a death in his family. We ask your holy consolation. The concerns we have are put in a proper proportion when we receive news such as this. We do ask your blessing upon him, upon our mayor, upon our commissioners, upon our city attorney, our city clerk, and all who work for this city, including our police department. Lord, there are many projects in process out in the field, and we pray for the safety of all who work at these. And, Lord, we ask you to give us the wisdom, the wisdom that we might continue to make Winter Springs even more than it already is, a place to find, place to raise children and to grow old gracefully. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, folks, let's see, we'll start with agenda changes.
Mayor, if I may. So I know this is the first time this has come up, but we have a piece on the books where we are supposed to alert the city clerk if we meet with a developer prior to the meeting of that evening. So this is an opportunity for us to verbally say, I know I did meet with Paul Partika in reference to one of the consent, not a consent, one of the agenda items for this evening. Mr. Hock, here.
Okay. Yeah.
Would he be considered?
You can bring up the ex-party communications at that item.
So just wait till then?
Yeah, go ahead and wait for the item, and then it'll be on the record for the item.
Would he be considered the developer since he's just the realtor of the property?
He's part of their team, as far as I can tell.
You're part of...
But still, yeah. All right.
Okay.
That was my...
So any other agenda changes? Okay, seeing none. Then we'll go right into public input. And anyone who wishes to speak during public input on this first public input, on any agenda item or subject matter, will need to fill out a blue public input form. Individuals will limit their comments to three minutes, and representatives of groups or homeowners' associations shall limit their comments to five minutes unless otherwise determined by the city commission. Again, we do have an expectation of cordial, adult, neighborly tone, if we may, if I may, if I might ask so much. And with that, we'll just move right into the first name. I have Karen Meyer. Good evening.
Hello. Karen Meyer, 741, and over circle. The last commission meeting, I found it very difficult to hear the words spoken by some of the commissioners. And so I considered what might be the issue. Well, after the meeting, I spoke with Christian, and I noticed tonight he has ratcheted up the speaker volume, which I can tell a difference. But I, in the comments I would have made, I would have reminded the members to always align your posture with the microphones so that we who show up and who are listening remotely can hear the words. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Great information. Thanks. And sometimes you get comfortable up here and feel like we're just meeting and kind of lean back a little bit, but yeah, thank you. Sheila Benton.
Christian. I'm representing Winter Springs residents first, please.
Is that an association or is that a PAC? I don't know if it qualifies for the five minutes.
I don't know that we really have ever set a rule. So Anthony, I'll refer, have we ever set that? We have the Winter Springs Community Association. Also, is it a PAC? Is it really, it's not a homeowners' association, which it actually says?
It says representatives of groups or homeowners' associations for the five minutes.
So then it's covered. It's a group.
It's a group. Okay.
You answered your own question.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
As I said, I'm Sheila Benton. My address is 414 Cedar Wood Court. I represent the Winter Springs Residents First Group. I've asked the clerk to pass these out so that you can reflect on my message. Mayor and commissioners, as you know, each one of you were elected by a majority of the voters of Winter Springs. Each of you ran on your own platform, and the voters selected you on that basis. Please remember that each of you represent all of the residents in Winter Springs. All of you were hired by the residents to do the people's work. In our representative form of government, it is therefore vital that each of you are allowed to place an item on the commission agenda for consideration and action. Ideas or proposals, even those that you do not like, must be brought forward as an agenda item. This is because Florida's Sunshine Law requires your discussion and consideration of any matter that you may vote on as a commission to be done here in the public commission meeting. Not while two or more are playing cards, not while you're having a meal or drinks together, not while you're on a cruise. If one of you wants to bring an issue forward, that commissioner should be provided a reasonable opportunity to represent it to the commission. Ideally, he would provide the background information to the city clerk at the time the agenda goes out so your colleagues can review it prior to the meeting. If, after a fair presentation, the majority of you do not wish to approve the proposal, then one of you needs to make such a motion with a second discussion, voted up or down. I saw firsthand from December 2015 to November 2018, that was a misprint, how Commissioner Resnick and former Mayor Lacy shut down Commissioners Carroll and Cannon from representing their constituents. It's simply un-American to shut down any of you elected officials that were hired and elected by Winter Springs voters. I urge you to respectfully, to be respectful to each other, work together as a commission of five, and do the job you were hired to do. And please, for God's sake, show up. Silencing any elected official is tantamount to the ultimate form of contempt for voters who put you in office. Now that I've made that statement, I have been hearing for months, weeks, that the five of you desire to be really transparent. And so I got to work. And here's what I found. There's been question as to what the history, were there financial quarterly reports presented to the commission? And I did what I'm famous for doing. I went in the background. Tristan, or Tristan. There's two, there's two separate files there that you all can review. These are items that came before the commission in 2009. They are quarterly statements. You will see how they set it up, and you can determine if this is something you want to be transparent for the residents. I appreciate all your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Benton. And then that brings us to Ms. Weissman. Actually, can you bring the microphone to Ms. Weissman? Thanks. And Ms. Weissman, so that we have your attention, let us finish collecting and getting this before you begin.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you had undivided attention. Thanks.
I don't have any handouts. Actually, I may start doing that, though. Leah Weissman, 113 Brookshire Court. I don't have to talk about the turn lane anymore. Getting done. It's, my creek's going to be taken care of, hopefully, before any storms. So I'm not going to talk about that. I'm back to the ADA, and the ADA is actually 35 coming up. So next month is, they call it like disability awareness or month or something, but so I thought I'd go back to what I did last year and do a little more education. But we have a lot of areas that have totally legal engineering spots that go to absolutely nothing that a person in a wheelchair can do. So everything past that is six inches above the ground, no curb cuts. I mean, I like the new sidewalk. Well, to me, it's new. I don't know, even no one else knows about it. But the sidewalk at Central Winds Park, it's gorgeous. But when you only have one curb cut accessible and your handicap spots are there for, there's two on the other side, they're worthless because they go nowhere. Because the whole point is to have the spot go to actual where you're trying to get to. The main street on Central Winds Parkway, I love that name, there isn't any handicap parking for the whole area. And I do get the response, but over there, we have six, and I'm like, that's two blocks away. It's supposed to be the closest to where you want to go. So if it's a building, like a stores, you have, you can't just have them all in one corner. You have one here, one here, spread them out. So especially the curb cuts would be helpful. A lot of us don't need really wider spots. I like to thank you, though, that I was told you got the temporary handicap parking spot, whatever you want to call them, cones or whatever. And hopefully, it'll help out this, you know, Fourth of July, which is coming all too soon. Just a suggestion, I don't know how they do it, but I think you should have a transcript done on YouTube. I don't know the process because if you can't hear well, it's the only, they may actually have it in front of them here and be here, but some people, you know, it's not clear enough. And hopefully, I won't do what somebody, I don't know who it was, spoke last, one of the meetings. I think they must have been rocking back. It was like every third word I kept missing. So I just want to remind people that parking spaces can't just be clumped up in one corner and say it's, we're all ADA. It also has to be accessible all the way to where they're getting to go. And in Trotwood Park, there's water fountain and, you know, shade covering and all that, design platforms that you can't get into because there's no sidewalk to them. So, and I can help anybody who wants to do it. I also want to know who is the coordinator, because I was told there isn't one now. So usually have an ADA coordinator that's assigned. So if anyone knows, I'd love to know.
Okay. That, thank you, Ms. Weissman, that opens the floor. Anyone that would like to address the commission? Commissioner Miller, welcome.
Mayor, Commissioners, city deputy city manager. About four years ago, something happened in our city, and I'm going to continue to beat this issue until I get some satisfaction. We were audited several times, and most of the people here in this, in this room really don't know what happened anymore. It's become part of history. But a lot of things were said, and they're still on the official record now in this audit that was done, and they've never really been resolved by the state or by whoever it was that, can you all hear me? So anyway. In April, in April 17, 2025, a letter was sent to Governor DeSantis. I asked him to look into a still unanswered list of weaponized charges made in a mid-2021, in 2021, by the head of the local Republican Party authorities to the JALAC in Tallahassee. Winter Springs Community Association had demanded a JALAC audit into the city's corruption, rampant mismanagement, malfeasance, violations of state ethics laws, a lack of transparency, taxpayer-funded misinformation, city campaigns censoring residents, theft of city property, and even profiteering by some commissioners in this city. There were other things that were mentioned, too. We were having problems with our water system. We were having problems with our sewage treatment plants. That was not addressed as part of these, this issues. It was just a general accusation about our city and the people that were working, sitting up on this dais in front of me right now, all of whom are no, those that were there before are all gone, with the exception, I guess, of Mayor McCann. So the JALAC finding three years later was nothing. None of these issues were addressed that I just highlighted. On June 6th, 2025, the governor answered a letter that I wrote him suggesting that I take my concerns to the inspector general and others who are already aware of the above I am today, I don't have enough time. Okay, anyway, I am today sending another letter back to the governor. I'm going to give you a copy of it tonight, but I'm afraid to do this. I spent 28 years in the military. I spent six, 11 years sitting up there, and I haven't seen a time where anybody that complains about the way our government is working at the local level is a problem, as it is for us right now, for revenge and things like that. And so when I looked into this, that the governor said, go to the attorney general. Yesterday's newspaper stated that they were about the attorney general here in Florida, in quote, they described it as, he's in so neck deep in the Hope, Florida scandal...
Commissioner, we need you to come get there.
...that his fellow Republicans said, it looks like he's organizing a money laundering I myself am troubled by all this. You need to walk a straight, narrow path from now on, and we need to, we need to resolve these issues. You maybe need to help clarify that all this stuff that I said in the beginning about the things that were done up here had no basis. There was no corruption. All these things that was pointed out was mean-spirited, and there are people still in the background that are thinking about this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else that, Ms. Schaefer?
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. First, the workshop that was held at 9:00 AM, Oviedo is having a workshop right now tonight at 5:30. Why could this not have been us? And I also, I know we're not supposed to say other commissioners or whatever, but I want to thank Commissioner Bruce, the electric bike idea and putting it out there. I have been talking about this for quite some time. I agree, education is what we need. We need the chief or the deputy chief to go to the schools and talk to the children about this. It's very important, but I also say that tickets work. And my husband and I witnessed an accident on Aloma with a person riding on a bike, and they crashed, and they're probably, I hate to say dead, but they had the highway patrol out there, and that's usually dead. So I think this issue really does need to be addressed. One commissioner asked at a city, at a meeting that she was in about why our city never signed the inner local agreement with the school board. The answer to that is the school board is always going to rubber stamp development. They have no skin in the game. Our past commission did not want Winter Springs little children in elementary school being shipped out to Geneva because our elementary school was at capacity. A few of the other commissioners may have known this answer, and citizens that also attended past commission meetings would also have known this answer, but that's an important thing. Also, if you give them that right to tell you and rubber stamp it, you have no voice. That's why the commission did what they did. They wanted to hold that over the school board, and sometimes people need an education. Also, under the code of conduct that you are talking about, if anybody wants fiscal information, they should have to get a background check, just like the people that actually have those by the city. Under the code, also, the clerk should hold all cell phones. I have seen on more than one occasion and on more than one meeting where commissioners are looking at their cell phones. Who are these people contacting you, and what is so important? And maybe we need to start making public record requests to know who you are talking to. Please don't silent our commissioner that you do not agree with. Healthy debate is the American way. As soon as we try to control someone we do not agree with, we are entering a socialist Marxism way of life. Also, the property across the street from Goodwill that was supposed to be the older people's development, it was, I was under the impression that there was supposed to always be fencing around new properties. There is no fencing around that property, and it looks horrible. If you want to know what I'm talking about, Hickory Grove has fencing. And even if the developer is going, needs to find new investments, put up a fence. It looks terrible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Brian, would you make a note of the fencing?
Yes.
Thanks. Anyone else who would like to take this first opportunity? Okay, seeing none, we'll end public input, and we will go straight to the consent agenda. Is there a discussion?
I'm not seeing any. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made by the deputy mayor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Baker. Christian?
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
And consent agenda passes. That brings us to public hearings agenda. Understood, folks? My tablet's not working, so if you want to speak, just, you know, do it the old-fashioned way, okay? And, okay, item 400, second reading of ordinance 2025-12, adopting the map and description of the recommended commission districts filed with the city commission by the districting commission pursuant to section 4.02 of the Winter Springs City Charter, providing for severability, repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, and an effective date. This is a public hearing item, Mayor. This is being submitted pursuant to section 4.02 of the city charter, requiring the city commission to adjust the district boundaries for commissioners every three years based on population changes. Mayor? Okay, discussion. Seeing none, then we'll go straight to public input. Anyone that would like to speak? Ms. Schaefer, specifically about item 400. This is regarding that districting of electoral, right?
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. I was curious why the, the board, which I don't even know how you would get their, them to answer the question, but why they did not go with the number one. And the reason was, number one was the least, no, no difference in who represented. And I was just curious, and, and the reason I say that is, and I never spoke up, but David Smith is not my representative anymore in my district, and I never said anything at the time, and that's why I'm saying this. So when you redistrict things, it said on that number one that those people were, there was the least, and you all picked one, that the people still are getting adjusted, and I don't understand why. And no one asked that question at the last meeting, so I'm asking the question. And I don't know who can answer that because he's, our city manager really isn't here, so I don't know.
I would be curious, I would like, just for my own clarification as well, Anthony, the, our representatives like Rachel Plaken, Dennis, or David Smith and Placencia, are their districts have anything to do with our districts in any way?
No, I think she was just stating that it happened before.
Oh, it happened in comparison. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. All right.
On my phone, like Ms. Schaefer said, and Ms. Schaefer usually I jump on my phone to do with the MUNICO, but we can't get internet here right now, so we can't pull this up.
Looking at, yeah.
Yeah, I was looking that up.
Yeah, right.
I think she is David Smith's sister.
Yeah, but deviation 7.31. So the deviation in one is 7.31, the deviation in four was 7.15. So we are picking the one with the smallest deviation.
Smallest deviation.
That's what we chose, yeah. That's why I just want to make sure.
The smallest number of people moving from one district to another district, yeah.
Or the difference between.
Well, the difference between, I mean, the districting commission had four scenarios to look at. They examined the scenarios, and I think what convinced them unanimously to recommend this, this map pursuant to city charter is that the deviations between the, each of the five districts is the smallest across the board. So it balanced the populations, you know, probably in the best way. That's what they were looking for.
It had slightly more changes, but less deviation.
Yeah, it had slightly more, yes, map changes, but at the end of the day, when you look at the population deviations, districts one through five, they were smallest across the board. And that, and that seemed to be the overarching reason why.
Okay. I appreciate it. I know we don't normally like engage and really do it, but that was an important one, and I was kind of curious as well. So anyone else that would like to address the commission on this item? All right, seeing none, I would like to thank those members that volunteered and served on the board, Mr. Gallo, I know that you were there, and others. We do appreciate them volunteering their time to help us reach that discussion or that decision without politics getting involved. So I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 400 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Deputy Mayor Resnick and seconded by Commissioner Baker.
Baker.
Baker?
Baker.
Yeah. Christian?
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
And the motion passes, just as a side note. So I said that a couple of months back, and so now every time I email her, talk to her, call her, Commissioner Baker, yeah.
It's my favorite.
A little inside joke, sorry. Anyway, okay, moving on.
It had slightly more changes, but less deviation.
Yeah, it had slightly more, yes, map changes, but at the end of the day, when you look at the population deviations, districts one through five, they were smallest across the board. And that, and that seemed to be the overarching reason why.
Okay, I appreciate it. I know we don't normally, like, engage and really do it, but that was an important one, and I was kind of curious as well. So anyone else that would like to address the commission on this item? All right, seeing none, I, I would like to thank those members that volunteered and served on the board, Mr. Gallo, I know that you were there, and others. We do appreciate them volunteering their time to help us reach that discussion or that decision without politics getting involved. So I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 400 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Deputy Mayor Resnick and seconded by Commissioner Baker. Bacon? Bacon?
Bacon.
Yeah, Christian?
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
And the motion passes, just as a side note. So I said that a couple of months back, and so now every time I email her, talk to her, call her, Commissioner Bacon, yeah.
It's my favorite.
Our little inside joke, sorry. Anyway, okay, moving on. Item 401, and first reading of ordinance 2025-04, small-scale future land use map amended of one parcel of land. And, let's roll. How are you?
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Acting City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk. My name is Tyrell Lynn, Role Director of Community Development. Items 401 and 402 are related, but I'll start with 401. Just a second here while they're pulling up the PowerPoint. The subject property is 1333 North US Highway 1792, currently occupied by Florida Auto Auctions. In 2023, the City Commission approved annexation of that property into city limits, and as such, the future land use map needs to, designation needs to be assigned, and the map needs to be updated, and subsequently, the zoning designation. So just a little bit on the timeline of the property. As you can see, the property is just north of Shepherd Road on 1792, and just last month, well, this month, the Planning and Zoning Board had their public hearing and is recommending approval, that the City Commission approve ordinance number 2025-04 related to this. The property is currently industrial under the Seminole County Unincorporated Future Land Use, and the proposed future land use would be commercial. And it shows you some of the uses surrounding regarding that recommendation. And so, just in terms of the future land use and being compatible with the goals for the city, the commercial future land use designation is being recommended versus industrial such as the county, there are some activities that can cause adverse effects in surrounding neighborhoods. And so, with that, the purpose of ordinance 2025-04 is for the future land use designation of commercial to be assigned to the parcel located at 1333 US Highway 1792. We do, we do have a representative of the applicant here, if you have questions for them, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Discussion or questions? From this bit of housekeeping? Commissioner?
Yes. Why, why wouldn't we just keep it industrial and not move it to commercial?
Because the parcel is now in Incorporated Winter Springs, and the current designation is Unincorporated Seminole County. So you would need to designate a Winter Springs future land use.
Right, and why wouldn't we do industrial versus commercial?
Because most of the activities surrounding now are commercial and not industrial, and there are neighborhoods just east of those properties on 1792. Some of the activities that are allowed within industrial, and I'll speak to that a little bit more when we get into the actual zoning designation, but the future land use or even the zoning of industrial will allow from activities that would allow, activities that may adversely affect surrounding neighborhoods and some of the existing commercial activities already.
And this is a super fund site?
It is an EPA super fund site, and the EPA is responsible for the site. They check in with the property owner periodically. They're responsible for the remediation. There's no responsibility on the part of the city regarding that.
And is there any effect of our drinking water by annexing this project in?
I can't speak to that, but you've already annexed the property in 2023, and so those questions, I recall, I don't recall the details, but I recall the commission asking all of those questions already. So I don't, I don't believe so, but again, I, I recall those questions being asked of the commission before you approved the annexation two years ago.
Is there anyone here that can clarify that? Because I know that was some concerns in the audience, and I wanted to just verify to alleviate that.
It, it was addressed at the meeting, Commissioner, but I'm just saying, I, I didn't respond to the question of the commission directly, but that question was raised, and there were not any concerns about drinking water. I believe you might have specifically asked that question.
I can answer.
Go ahead, Mayor.
That's okay.
Sure.
What, as I recall, the conversation was, is that, and I'm going to have a second part to this, but a request to follow up, but we understood that there's a problem there, and, and that the EPA and the landowner, they solely own that problem and any long-term issues that may come around from that. The damage was done decades ago, there's nothing, I mean, they are treating it currently, they're monitoring it, they're treating it, they're making sure that everything, and the monitoring is most important. Us annexing that land in frankly does two things. It adds to our tax base, and it now gives us a legal right to request certain information. We now have more power over that land that's right on our city border than had we not annexed the land in. We now get to watch it and be careful and ask for reports and ask for, hey, what's that data showing? Where before it wasn't in the city, so we had some limitations. That's the way I recall the conversation. With that being said, I'll make a note, Brian, or to anyone else, if you make a note, could we somehow, or the clerk, find out where the EPA stands, or any latest reports or anything like that, and forward that to the commission members? So that we're aware of what's going on there?
So the applicants, I think they're here, may not be here, but they are, the EPA's communicating directly with the property owner.
Okay.
And so they have their schedule of what they're doing, and...
We were provided at one time, they did give us some drone, they did, maybe I'll go back and look at that original information. I would just, as a neighbor, as a resident, I'm supportive, but as a neighbor, sure, just to know what's going on. I think that they're doing, you know, everything that they need to do. We appreciate having new neighbors, and, and I'm looking forward to them being here. But just to keep a finger on that. Deputy Mayor?
Commissioner Bruce, with your permission. Anthony, if I recall that meeting, a lot of it related to you, and asking for the conversations that you'd had with their attorneys to set in motion, I guess, an agreement, a transfer agreement with what we were doing with the EPA. That's how I remember that meeting.
I mean, there was, there was information, I can't remember all the details off the top of my head, that, you know, I had a, I had a consultation with the EPA attorney in Atlanta and the developer's attorney about, not about the drinking water issue, I mean, I don't even know if that information was even relevant to the annexation. It was more about the status of the super fund site, and that they had reached, reached a milestone, and they actually had a recommended solution that was going to be implemented, that's what I recall, and that, you know, it was on the priority list for super fund, which means eventually the cleanup would get done, was my recollection. But in terms of, like, impact on drinking water, I don't recall that issue at all being relevant to the annexation issue, because it is what it is. If you recall, there was some discussion about, there was a old water connection to the site, and that they are prohibited from having wells, right, for irrigation purposes or any other purpose on the site.
Right.
And it was important to them to have the city's, you know, water connection, and that, that was about the extent of, that I recall in drinking water.
Right. Commissioner Bruce, remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Answer your questions, or would you like to continue?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Seeing none. Because it's a public input, shall we get public input on this item, and then we'll move on to, to 402?
And you would need to ask for a read by title on the ordinance.
Thank you, that's right.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner, made by the deputy mayor, seconded by Commissioner Caruso. All in favor? Read by title only?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Anthony?
Mayor, like we've done in the past, I'm going to go ahead and read the future land use map amendment ordinance title and the rezoning ordinance title, and the commission could take one public input on the proposed future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment.
So 401 and 402?
Yes, so can I have a motion to read by title on both of those?
Certainly. Made by the deputy mayor, seconded by Commissioner Caruso. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the first, the first ordinance is the future land use map proposed amendment. Ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Winter Springs, Seminole County, Florida, relating to comprehensive planning and amending the future land use map for four parcels of real property within the city of Winter Springs totaling approximately 9.82 acres, more or less, generally located east of US Highway 1792 and northeast of the intersection of Shepherd Road and Highway 1792. Said parcels being more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached Tier 2, changing the future land use map designation of the parcel from county industrial to city commercial, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and effective date and legal status of the plan amendment. The second ordinance is the rezoning of the property that's being proposed. It's ordinance 2025-05, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Winter Springs, Seminole County, Florida, relating to the zoning map designation of four parcels of real property within the city of Winter Springs totaling approximately 9.82 acres, more or less, generally located east of US Highway 1792 and northeast of the intersection of Shepherd Road and Highway 1792. Said parcels being more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached Tier 2, changing the zoning map designation of the parcels from county M1 to city, general commercial district C2, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, resolutions, severability, and an effective date. First reading of both ordinances. Mayor?
Thank you. All right, discussion. Nope. Then we'll open it to public input, and with, with Mr. Garganese, he will allow us to do public input on 401 and 402.
Without opening 402?
Is that right? We can do 401 and 402 for public input?
The one, one public, one public hearing for the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning of the same property.
Right.
I'm not sure mine is on 401 or 402 actually, but I just wanted to raise a, a couple of issues regarding the annexation of this property. You all may remember that the, this whole issue of water pollution in Seminole County hit the media about two years ago on a Monday morning, I think it was a Monday morning, and on a Wednesday, we had a meeting here, I think it was, or maybe it was the previous, anyway, three days later, we annexed that property. So the county evidently knew that this was coming, and we, I don't think we knew it. We knew it was a problem, but we didn't realize the scope of it. So now the county's saying to the, to the world, we have a real problem with Lake Mary, we have a real problem with, with Sanford, and so we're going to get together and have a, a, a cooperative lawsuit against General Dynamics and probably Siemens, and maybe the people that are referenced in 402, which is Raytheon Industries, I think, I don't know who they were, they were probably some subcontractor that was working on, on our site, who doesn't have deep pockets anymore. So about four months ago, I came, stood before you, and said, why don't you approach the county and say, we really want to join this lawsuit, because the problem at our recently annexed super fund site is, is, is corrupted with the exact same problem, chemical stuff that's polluting the water in Lake Mary and, and Sanford. And I don't, I haven't heard anything about our city approaching anybody, but I think you're, you're walking on thin ice by saying that EPA has assured you that, you know, they're going to take care of this problem when it arrives. EPA may not, may not even exist here shortly, so it's going to come down to the state to put up the money, maybe to clean up our polluted sites. So whatever the county's doing, please approach them and say, we want to join you because our problem is exactly the same as your problem with Lake Mary and Sanford regarding underwater aquifer pollution. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Schaefer?
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. I agree that EPA may not exist, and we do need to maybe join forces with the two other, with the county about this, because this is going to become our problem. And for you commissioners, you have, this is only the first reading, so if you went back and looked at the planning and zoning, what we asked as questions at that time, and one of the questions that they asked and told us is, well, we're only having a bathroom on there. That's why they needed access to public, there's not going to be anything other than that, but you guys need to look at that meeting with the planning and zoning and what they were saying and bringing up in questions, because you've got one more shot at this apple. And I totally agree with our commit, our past commissioner, that we need to do our research before we pass something.
Thank you. Anyone else specifically? Okay, I would like to make one comment. I would, you know, some may disagree with me. I think we're very fortunate to have these folks come in and be willing to invest significant amount of money in this piece of property. What they're doing is, first, I want to make sure, this is not the responsibility of the current owners. They bought a piece of contaminated land, they're paving it over, turning it into a parking lot. There will be no homes or apartments there, no one that's going to be living on top of this stuff. They, they, we have signed documents from the EPA and things saying that what's going on and what they're going to do. They own the problem. I just want to make sure, this is the best-case scenario, that we have someone willing to invest millions of dollars in purchasing that and then paying us property taxes, and we get to oversee it now. Where when it stays outside of the city limits, our, you know, our ability to control what goes there, doesn't go there, and what happens there is very, very middle, we know when there's an enclave right in the middle of the city, and now we have a storage unit. I mean, we know the consequences of not pulling something in. I'd like to, again, remind everybody, these current owners have nothing to do with the ongoing problems there, they didn't create it, but they're, but they're willing to make an investment in our city and pay property taxes, commercial property taxes, which are significant compared to residential. Just like everyone to be aware of those things. Thank you. And with that, unless anyone wanted to say something further, take a motion.
Point of information?
Sure.
If, if the city attorney could, could, could address this, if, if, if Commissioner Miller is correct in his assessment, and he represented this seat for many years, so I guess I, I'd like to ask the question on his behalf. If, if he is correct in what he's saying, what would the city's liability be?
With respect to this site?
Yeah.
I mean...
Say this passes.
I don't believe this impacts the city's potential liability. I mean, the liability regarding the, the contamination that's subject to the EPA is, is the former, my understanding is the former property owner, which was General Dynamics. And there was a proposed plan of, of action, I think, that was approved by EPA in, in 2022. So, you know, this, this doesn't change that. I mean, I know somebody's mentioned drinking water, but the city is, you know, I'll let the utilities department and our consultants talk about the quality of the drinking water. I mean, the city doesn't have a drinking water well on this property, maybe in the general area somewhere, but it's not on this property, whether it, you know, that there's an impact with respect to that. It's not, you know, that, that's another issue altogether. Like, I think Lake Mary and Sanford are dealing with that issue. And I, I mean, again, I won't speak for our utility department in terms of water quality, but, you know, Lake Mary and Sanford have different, slightly different, or significantly different issue to deal with, with their wells.
The only drinking water on this property will be piped in for that one bathroom. There is no water coming from that land. Now, what will happen in the decades to come, again, if, that would happen whether they're inside the city limits or outside the city limits, that damage is done. This way, we get to continue to monitor and work with the landowner as a, as a local agency. I'm sorry, I interrupted, that was your...
So no future use of this property could further contaminate the environment?
Oh, I can't speak to that. You know, I'm just, my understanding is, I mean, this is just changing the future land use map and the zoning map designation. The proposed project is a relatively low-impact project regarding paving the property for, for vehicles, as well as, I think they, I think previous to the annexation, they were demoing... vehicles, as well as, I think they, I think previous to the annexation, they were demoing the old, the old structures on the property and maybe building a new one, but I don't, I don't know what the current status is.
No, that's correct. And it is, if you ever get a chance to drive by there, they just repaved, redid some lighting, it's fenced in, it's for auto auction and sales, they store the vehicles there, so what you see is what you get. They do have a development agreement tied to that annexation, and any future use that is different than what is currently there would have to come before the city commission. So, but because it is annexed into the city, the plan, future land use amendment has to be approved and the zoning designation assigned.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion. And so can we take a motion since we've done public input?
Each ordinance is voted on separately.
Okay, so we'll start with motion for item 401.
I'll make that motion to approve item 401 as presented.
Made by Deputy Mayor, second?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Baker. Christian?
Commissioner Diaz.
Yes.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Motion passes. And then for item 402.
I'll make motion to approve item 402 as presented.
Made by the Deputy Mayor.
I'll second again.
And seconded by Commissioner Baker. Christian?
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and thank you folks for the investment in our city. Item 403, Sutton Crossings' final plat approval.
Good evening again. For the record, Tara Lynn, Role Director of Community Development, apologize I don't have an overhead, but this commission is pretty familiar with the project. We have approximately 6.2 acres east of Tuscaloosa, north of Michael Blake. It's for the Ace Hardware Development and the plating of that property for various other purposes. Three parcels currently, approximately 6.2 acres. The applicant's requesting for the subject property to be subdivided into five parcels for the purpose of the hardware store, retail space, and a quick serve drive-through restaurant. Those activities have already been approved by city commission on May 12 for the Chick-fil-A for the Ace Hardware and the retail spaces. At your last city commission, you approved the right-of-way vacation related to the infrastructure installation. And so this is the final part, so they can formally record and sell those properties to the various entities. And so with that, the Planning and Zoning Board has forwarded a recommendation of approval for Sutton Crossing's final plat. And there are just a few conditions tied to it. At the time of planning and zoning, we were finalizing the last review of the city surveyor. That's been completed. And so staff recommends that the city commission approve the Sutton Crossing's plat and authorize the plat to be recorded, subject to the satisfaction of the following conditions. There would need to be a filing of a subdivision bond in a form acceptable to the city attorney. There are some final comments of the city surveyor, not too many, that they would need to address within 30 days of this meeting, should you approve? And then also that there would be no finalization of real estate transactions until the final plat is recorded with the county. So those are the three conditions. And this will enable them to really move ahead with getting those projects going.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Discussion or questions?
Just for clarification, a subdivision bond, can you just confirm what that is?
Yes, so there, it's a plat application, so they're subdividing the parcels into five parcels. And on the development site, they will be installing infrastructure for stormwater and utilities, et cetera. And so whenever there's work being done in or near a public right-of-way, the developer usually submits a bond that covers the costs of their project, should there be any repairs or replacement that the city would be responsible for during that time. So during the construction, they're providing that surety that they can cover the cost of any damages related to that project. And then when the project's done, they then have a maintenance bond that they give for two years in the event there's any subsequent associated damages with that site, that they would cover those costs for two years before the city releases them. So the subdivision bond is typical of development projects.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
Other discussion? Seeing none, then we'll go straight to public input on item 403, Sutton Crossing's final plat approval. Seeing none? I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 403.
Second.
Made by Deputy Mayor Resnick and seconded by Commissioner Caruso. Christian?
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations to those folks. And item 404, Seahawk Cove Extension of 434 and 419, Michael Blake Boulevard, Final Engineering and Site Plan, Final Plat, Waivers, Removal of Three Specimen Trees and Development Agreement.
Good evening again. I'm going to move aside, but I would like to formally introduce the commission to one of our new senior planners, Mr. John Raven. He prepared the staff report for this project, so he will be presenting, and I'll be here to assist him.
Good evening again. My name's John Raven. I'm one of your new senior planners, and let me say what a pleasure it is to be here working for the state of Winter Springs and being responsible for its growth and its future. So, just to get on with it, so this is, Community Development Department is requesting that the city commission hold a public hearing to consider the site, final engineering, final plat, two waivers, removal of three specimen trees, and development agreement regarding the applicant's request to extend Seahawk Cove. This is a 8.11 acre property that is located within the town center in the T5 transect. The extension of Seahawk Cove is being proposed in order to service the five lots that are going to be created out of this project that are going to be a mixture of residential and commercial uses. The June 5th Planning and Zoning Board had their public hearing and recommended that the city commission approve the site plan, final engineering, the final plat, the waivers, removal of three specimen trees, and the development agreement subject to several conditions. So if you can see, this is our history in the background, let's see. All right, this is what is going to be proposed. And here are the proposed conditions that include the execution of the development agreement, mitigation of specimen and non-specimen tree removal per the arbor permit application. Applicants shall be required to pay $227,400 for the removal of the trees, including the three specimen trees prior to the issuance of the tree removal and land clearing permit, the filing of a subdivision performance bond in a form acceptable to the city attorney, that there will be no retail sales, manufacturing, compounding of any projects derived from the hemp plant or cannabis plant, including CBD. The all grass on the property shall be Bahia grass, no Saint Augustine grass or grass types with a low drought tolerance. To address all the comments in the surveyor's report within 30 days of the city commission approval, and I can guarantee that I looked at that today, I got that back from the applicant, and they did address the surveyor's comments in full. And then lastly, the preservation of a 52 specimen oak tree on the corner of State Road 434 and Michael Blake Boulevard. All right, and with all of that, I will accept any questions that you may have.
Commissioners? Commissioner Bruce?
Yes. I'd like to start with addressing that I met with Paul Partica on this matter on Friday at 3:45, and he gave me a briefing of the history of this project with old developer agreements from 2015 and 2017. And I wanted to address the tree mitigation because there's a discrepancy if the money has been paid or if it's due. And so I just wanted to address that issue and see if we could find out if both payments have been made to address the tree mitigation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bruce, you're referring to the tree mitigation related to a previous development agreement?
This is correct, but for this parcel.
Okay, I confirmed today that we haven't, we don't have a record of payment for that. Yeah, but that, you know, we can research that further. We have an older system, so we can research that further. But I think any question about the tree mitigation, I believe our city attorney's office might speak to that a little bit better, tree mitigation from a previous development agreement, as well as the proposed tree mitigation for this current project, which is separate from that, has its own development agreement.
It may be correct, and would you like to know specifically the disagreement that appears to be lingering?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I will allow the, those that are interested in the party, in this discussion to have their time as well. So if I might sum this up, there appears to be a disagreement. There was, there were two other development agreements, there are two other projects that were planned. One paid some money, one never came to fruition and did not pay any money. And so this, by the city's opinion, is a separate deal, separate parcel. It's next to the Blake Apartments that had a development agreement, that's the city's position. So my formal question for the city attorney, because we're going to need legal advice on this one because it seems to be going around, I'm hearing a little bit about it as well. I guess I would like to know, what is your understanding of the argument? And then we would need some legal advice or a decision from our city attorney. Do we have some liability in this, or is it, as I've understood it, to be two separate issues? Or, yeah?
How about if I can frame it as, the issue is, I understand it, and then you may want to hear from the applicant and the applicant's attorney, who I, you know, I understand Mr. Partica has reached out to some of you, so you can hear their position. The issue is, this is another phase of the Winter Springs Town Center II project. And this particular phase is the commercial parcels, some of the remaining commercial parcels, and for this, and the city commission is considering final engineering and aesthetics, right, or final engineering for the commercial parcels, this phase of the development. And staff calculated what the tree mitigation arbor fee is for this specific phase of the project, for the commercial lots. And that amount is incorporated into the draft development agreement under paragraph 4A, and it's $227,400 for the removal of the trees for this phase of the project. You're going to hear from the applicant's attorney that when the first modification to the development agreement was approved for the Blake Apartments, that the arbor fee that was paid at the time the Blake Apartments was constructed was the arbor fees for the entire Town Center Phase II property, which if you want to get your head around it, it currently includes the Blake Apartments, the Starbucks, the Wendy's, the Chase Bank, I think there's another building there, the, I call it the Dream Finders Townhouses that are on the bend at the trail. And what's left of the Town Center Phase II project are the vacant lands that are right there, west of Michael Blake Boulevard. They're proposing to develop a portion of it right now for the commercial component. So their position you're going to hear is, when that first modification was approved for the Blake Apartments, they, there was a payment of...
$117.
$117, and that was for the tree removal for the remaining part of the project, all the rest of the property, not just the Blake.
Would we not have maps showing us what trees were included in that first agreement?
There is a final engineering plan that was approved by the city commission, which contained, you know, the landscape plan, and I share, you know, I had a telephone conference with Mr. Partica and Mr. Trumbull, who's the attorney this afternoon, about this. And late this afternoon, I was trying to search through some of the old records that I could find, and, you know, I found a couple of old records that, you know, indicates to me that when the tree mitigation fee was for the Blake Apartments was calculated, the former community development director calculated that fee of, just for the Blake Apartment property. And it was, and there's more to the story, but I think you probably want to hear from the applicant.
Yes.
Now's your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, if we can, first, for the record, just, I also had a meeting with Paul on Friday about this as well, so I just want to put that out there now.
Yeah, I think that is important. So let's be very, for the record, because it is required by ordinance, but very specific. So Commissioner Caruso...
I also did.
Commissioner Baker.
Friday morning.
And the deputy mayor have met with the developers in the last week and discussed this issue.
Just Paul Partica.
Or Paul Partica, the agent of record for the property. Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Allison Turnbull Jones here on behalf of the applicant, 1508 Highland Road, Winter Park, Florida. And I had sent the city clerk a document that I was hoping we could all walk through together. Perfect, thank you. So I think there's a lot of confusion about this, even Anthony and I, I think Anthony, Paul, and I are the only ones that were here when we did this. So, you know, we all had to kind of dig back into our memory to figure this out. But let me walk you through how this evolved, and I think you'll see where the confusion is coming in. So as you correctly mentioned, Mayor, there was an original development agreement for the entirety of the property, including the Blake, and everything to the east of Michael Blake Boulevard, which is the property that we're talking about now. So you can see, the first highlight describes that total property as a phased development project on the property, which is generally located on confronting the north side of 434 and both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard. And it defines that as the project, term of art. The next highlight then drills down and defines the initial phase of the project located west of Michael Blake Boulevard, which is the Blake, will consist of two or more apartment buildings and mixed-use buildings, and they define that as the initial phase. Okay? So moving on to the first modification, and that is where the arbor fee comes in for the project. You can see the next highlight down at the bottom, that this is in the first modification. It again references the property that's described in the original development agreement as all of the property and the project. It does not redefine project, so it does not say this first modification is only for the initial phase, it doesn't do that, and I'm going to tell you why in just a second, but let me, let me walk you through this. So if you would flip to the next page for me, please, thank you. So the first modification continues to isolate the arbor fee, but it refers to the entire project. So you can see in that second highlight that the final adjusted city arbor fee for the project, again, which is defined as everything to the east and west of Michael Blake Boulevard, it's all of the property, shall be $149,660. And let me tell you a little bit about the background when we did these first two agreements. So the developer of this project installed a very high level of infrastructure for not just the Blake, but for the entire city center project as a whole. They spent nearly $2 million installing infrastructure in the form of roads, in the form of stormwater ponds, in the form of a lift station, and in the form of utilities, both installed and oversized to accommodate future development in and around the city center, the town center. So they handled everything upfront, right? So, they handled everything upfront, right? So they handled pretty much all of the capital expenditures for the entire city center project upfront when they did the original development agreement and this first modification. So, it is not surprising that the arbor fee refers to the arbor fee for the entire project, because that's how the infrastructure was handled. The arbor fee was also paid for the entire project at the time, because the discussion was the time value of money, the city preferred to have it all then, as opposed to waiting for more of it downstream, which would be now. This second portion of the project was intended to come right behind the Blake. Unfortunately, given market conditions and given some of the limitations and restrictions in the original development agreement on additional multifamily, the market just hasn't been there. It's here now, and they would like to proceed with this project, but, you know, they relied upon this arbor fee being for the entire project. So, they calculated all of their pro formas, all of their budgets, everything, you know, they have made, they've entered into contracts with downstream users, or, you know, people that they are selling property to, based upon this having been already paid. So, when they received the new developers' agreement with section 4A, and we agree with everything in it, we agree with staff's recommendation with the exception of that section 4A, which is the arbor fee, the developers are just shocked, I mean, they were just like, no, this has to be just a mistake, we have to, you know, work through this. So, you know, there's a very high level of confusion, I think, on this. The $149,000 was paid. I know, Anthony, I think, I don't know if we went back and found that, but we have the checks, the canceled checks and the bills, if everyone needs it, but I think the city does have that in their records. So that has already been taken care of. And so, you know, we're here tonight just to ask, I guess, there are a few options, right? And unfortunately, with our contractual obligations to our end users and just the timing constraints on the project, we do need to move forward with this development agreement tonight. We're really not able to continue it, or, you know, otherwise we would be having more detailed discussions and taking longer, but we're just not in a position to do that. So, you know, I think there's kind of three options. The first is to honor the original agreements that were entered into and paid for. I mean, the developer has honored their part, they did not develop any more multifamily, they waited almost 10 years to develop the second portion, they waited for the market to be right for commercial, and so, you know, they have been burdened by these agreements, and they have, you know, done that willingly. And so, we're just asking that the city honor this arbor fee issue from the original agreements. So, I don't know, and Anthony and I talked about this earlier today with Paul, we don't really know, like, what that is in the context of the development agreement that's in front of you. It's not really a waiver, because we're just abiding by the agreements that already exist. And just one more point of clarification, this development agreement, the new one that is being voted on tonight, it is in addition to these other two agreements. So this property is included in the original development agreement and in the first modification. So this is just going to be a third, it's a little confusing, a third development agreement that is going to apply to this portion of the property, but it is still encumbered by the other two agreements as well. So, it's not like the first two only deal with the west side or the east side, and this one deals with the other side. They are all governed by those first two agreements, and then this property is governed by this third one. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or talk through it further. I mean, Paul is here as well, who, you know, we were all here when the original agreements were done, you know, but we would just like to move this forward, you know, in a constructive way tonight, but, you know, we're open for a discussion, but hopefully that clears up some of the confusion.
Okay, I've got a list of questions, so let the commissioners go first. Commissioner Bruce.
So, I have the deposited check proof for the specimentary removal of 5,000 and the arbor permit of 11,160 for a total of 16,160 from March 2 of 2017. And then I have an invoice for 133,500, but no check that shows that it was deposited.
Let me just check, so Clayton, do we have a copy of that check, or do we, I thought that we had that.
Is there any...
We can find that, I mean, I...
It's an assume that...
I don't know about the payment, I mean, I don't keep the books there, but, I mean, I'd like to add a few things too, just to give you a little additional background at the appropriate time.
Okay.
But we have made that payment, so, I mean, I don't have a canceled check in front of me, but that payment has been made, so we're happy to confirm that, however you need.
Shall we let the attorney go?
I, I mean, it's unfortunate, I guess there's a disagreement here, disagreement regarding the payment of the arbor fees, is he all right over there? Just wanted to give you a little bit more background, that I, you know, scrambled this late this afternoon, and I've given you whatever I could find just to try to shed some light on history that occurred, I mean, we're talking 10 years ago. And I think it's important in your decision-making just to hear a little bit more of what's in the city's record, okay? And you all can make the decision at the end of the day, okay? So, back in March of 2015, the original, the property owner, Winter Springs Holdings, asked and received the approval of the original development agreement, which was basically just a concept plan for the future Winter Springs Town Center 2. The Winter Springs Holdings was a corporation or LLC that was created by the International Brotherhood of the Electric Union, which was the pension fund that took the property back when the town center, original town center developer lost the property during the Great Recession, okay? So, then they came forward, Winter Springs Holdings, with a developer called Pollock Shores, to build a multifamily project, which is now the Blake Apartments. And at that time, in December of 2015, while we were preparing the first modification to the development agreement, the former community development director sent me an email with the calculations for the arbor fee for the Blake Apartments. And that arbor fee was calculated based on the project acreage for the Blake Apartments, which was roughly six and a half acres. And the fee that was calculated at that time was $275,750. That was put into the first modification agreement, and it was approved by the city commission when the final engineering plans for the Blake Apartments was approved. That first modification agreement was sent to the representative of Winter Springs Holdings in Washington for signature. They never signed the original, the first version of the first modification. Apparently, Pollock Shores backed out, and then subsequently, the city got contacted by Catalyst to be a substitute, I guess, developer, to come in and do the construction, or do the project for the Blake Apartments. And a different version of the first modification was prepared and presented to the city commission for approval, and it was approved. With respect to the arbor fee, the 149,000, was it 149?
That's correct.
1,660? The agenda item, the new, the second version of the first modification had that number in it. And the agenda item basically said, the developer agrees to pay, you know, that arbor fee, which was based to match the recently updated arbor ordinance. So, in other words, the $275,750 original arbor fee, which was calculated based on the acreage of the Blake Apartments, was reduced to 149,660 because of a change in the arbor ordinance. So, that needs to be stated. Now, they're talking about the definition of project in the original development agreement. I don't disagree that project was, but the first, second version of the first modification to development agreement, which was not highlighted on the screenshot, the second recital, the whereas clause says, "On December 14, 2015, the city commission approved the final engineering plans submitted by the developer for the project, subject to a first modification of development agreement, which was approved by the city commission." Well, the only final engineering plans that were considered at that time and approved were for the Blake Apartments. The first modification, the second one, that recital talked about final engineering plans for the project. The final engineering plans didn't include this property, or the Starbucks property, or any of the other properties that were approved under the original developers' agreement and of the concept plan. So, that's a little bit more history on how we got to that number, staff, the previous staff got to that number of 149,660, how it was calculated. Now, I've given, I've given Mr. Partika and the Catalyst group documents I was able to find late, late this afternoon, that I copied, running into City Hall, a copy, which was the email from the former community development director, the first version of the first modification, the agenda item where the staff said, okay, we got a new developer in town, and we're making some minor modifications from the first version of the first modification, and the arbor, the way it was explained in the agenda item, and the fiscal impact and elsewhere, was the arbor fee was being reduced because of a change in the arbor ordinance. So, I'd want to make sure that the commission has that information, that's the best information I have, based on the history from 10 years ago, and, you know, they're making their argument that, you know, they don't have to pay the arbor fee for this commercial component, and just keep in mind, if the commission decides to waive the fee for the commercial component, what's soon going to follow is there's still remaining undeveloped property for potential residential just due north of it. And, you know, you take a look at an aerial map and a tree survey, and there's a lot of trees on that property too. So, you know, you waive it here, they're going to come back for the next portion and say that, you know, they're entitled to the same waiver, based on their argument. Again, you're, I mean, I'm sure they got something else to say, but it's your call at the end of the day.
I have a question.
I think Commissioner Caruso had been waiting.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I hear the explanation, but, and, on the follow-up, having to do with waive one, waive the other, I mean, I don't look at this more as a waiver, per se, because I find the original arbor ordinance to be a problem to begin with, so that's a different conversation. However, you know, when you're, and I hear you on recital 2, when you're saying project, but realistically, what would prevent the understanding, the greater spirit of the document, you know, within the four corners of that document, to not be the project in general, because they're thinking of the entire project, which included all these subparts? I mean, you know, when you put a large document together that is comprised of many parts, you know, I mean, I speak from experience, I mean, a tax return is not a monolithic item, it is many schedules in between that go in there. Why wouldn't they be considering project to be a more holistic number, you know, from the original, I guess?
Well, I mean, I think, you've got to look at the context of the first modification. One, I don't, I think, I don't think the language supports their position, but, and look at the context of it when it was approved. It was approved in conjunction with, at the same time, as in support of the final engineering plans for the Blake Apartments. And that's the way the city, the arbor fees are calculated based on, if you look at the code, based on project by project.
But with a multimillion dollar investment into infrastructure and other items, so, you know, the cost of goods, in other words, the cost of the entire project would have been with those funds, because even, even when I look at a compounding rate of return based on, from 2017 to present, three and a half percent compounding, I mean, you're still only at $199,000. And I mean, this is now the second time in two meetings where we're bringing up arbor as a conversation, and again, we use the word waiver, that's a completely separate conversation. But, you know, the prior, you know, investor felt that the city had misrepresented that fee, and that's why it came to us as a quasi-judicial body, and at that time, I mean, I think it's on record that I voted against, and I didn't speak up. But my thinking at the time was that the city did not meet its burden, that they had not properly communicated the information to the last person that was here. The outcome, obviously, here has not been determined yet. But, I mean, if deposits were made at the time, time value of money alone says that the city benefited, benefited quite handsomely by having the money upfront, because today they would be paying with significantly lesser valued dollars. I'm, I guess I'm concerned that there seems to always be this misunderstanding or a confusion. The city has always has one position, which is absolutely fantastical, and then capital reality seems to be another. Whether it be the capital reality of an investment, or the capital reality of the cost of things, which I find the arbor situation to be absolutely laughable at best, and probably unconstitutional to begin with, but it hasn't been challenged. I mean, you have private landowners that are being told how to deal with the trees on their property, but this has already been paid for, and I haven't seen, I haven't seen the city say that it hasn't been paid. Like, I have not heard specifically, we never got that money.
I assume the city got the money, because it was calculated, it was calculated, it was in the first modification, and you have to come in for a land clearing permit, I believe that's the time that these fees are paid.
Yes, we would not have been able to build that project.
I think we're all in agreement, the money came, nobody's arguing that.
Well, and if I may, just one point of clarification...
The commissioner, deputy mayor's been waiting, let the deputy mayor go, and then we'll let you go, and then we'll take another turn.
Commissioner Diaz, this is nothing to do, I was going to say this anyways, so please. So, I was here in 2017, and I was here in 2015, and I was very against this project, but we were told we had to do it, and the attorney may remember a lot of this conversation, because it was stuff that was prior to the financial crash, and was held that we had to kind of work through it. So the fact that there were apartments was very much a broken apart project. I don't know if you recall all of that, but there was a lot of contention about even putting this in place, okay? So, I am also the person that broke these apart upfront. I was very adamant that we weren't going to move forward if we couldn't have commercial projects here. So that whole Starbucks section, this whole section here, it was all broken apart. It wasn't you, there was another person here, and they said, well, we'll put pads down, we'll wait for the commercial to come. And I actually asked to hold it. I said, no, let's get the commercial, so we can do it all at one time, and they said, no, they wanted multi-phased project. That's how this came about. So, from me sitting here, to me, this has been a multi-phased approach from the start with completely separate entities, to the point that even the apartment complex, we had to put that there, because that was held prior to my sitting here in 2010. Attorney, is that correct? That was the whole Toll Brothers, union concept? Because that's how I remember this.
Yeah, it was approved in the original agreement as residential.
Right.
And multifamily was a permitted residential use.
And not apartments, multifamily wise. Right. And so, that was held in such timeframe, it's the same as the project that's over there. So to come here and say, in good faith, that this was one project, no ma'am, sorry, from my seat here, as far as a commissioner, this was supposed to be a multi-phased piece. Now, on the legal side...
We're not arguing that.
No, no.
So we agree with you on that.
On the legal side, the way I read it, and if, in my reading of both first modification and second modification... and second modification, it says in there that they're phased. So, you said when you started-
We're not arguing with the phasing. So, let me, let me maybe clarify.
Yeah.
So, it was always a phased project. Yes, you are absolutely correct on that.
Right.
The issue, and, and, and I agree, I mean, look, this is what it is, I appreciate Commissioner Diaz, you, you bringing up the confusion and, and all of this. Here's the problem. The only thing that we have that governs this payment, and how it was made and what it was for, are these recorded documents, that's it.
Right.
So, when you go back to it, and if you could maybe flip back to the second page for me, that would be great. Uh, you know, it is a phased project, that is acknowledged in the original development agreement, and it's also acknowledged in the first modification. However, a term of art in the original development agreement is initial phase, right? Which was the Blake. A different term of art in the original development agreement is the project. So, in the first modification, the opportunity was there to say, right here, "The city agrees that the final adjusted city Arbor fee for the initial phase is this." So, if this were intended to be the initial phase, that is how that document would have read. Instead, it reads "for the project as a whole," and I'm giving you the background-
Doesn't say "as a whole."
Doesn't say "whole."
Well, but the, the project is defined under the original development agreement.
But that's okay.
Well, just hold on, one second. The project is defined as both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard. So, it is, all of the property is the project, under the original development agreement. So, from our perspective, the difficulty that we're having is that we have based all of our financial modeling, all of our contracts, all, everything, in reliance on these two recorded documents, which are the only things that, that govern with the city. So, you know, now, we're being told, "Oh, no, just kidding, that doesn't really mean that, that was just for the first phase." But it doesn't say that. Like, the opportunity was there very easily to say that, and this document doesn't say it. So, the difficulty that we're having is, like, we followed these documents. We did not build any more multifamily, largely because of concerns from you and, and other people. Um, you know, we abided by this, we paid the fee, you know, we did everything else, we put restrictions on those apartments, we put restrictions on how the commercial could be developed, um, no complaints, right? And now, we feel like we're just here getting the burdens of it, and none of the benefits. So, you, we're in, I mean, I hate to keep using the word confusion, but, like, we're not really confused, because we know what the documents say, and we know what was intended. But what's confusing is that now the city is asking for another 200 some odd thousand dollars in an Arbor fee, when this document says that it was already paid for the project back in 2017. So, that's our dilemma. I mean, so, we, we would ask not for a waiver, we would just ask for the original agreements to be followed, as it relates to the Arbor fee. Now, we're happy to discuss, I mean, the, the developer, I mean, I think has made the offer that, you know, the larger specimen trees, or I, I don't know what they're called, Clayton?
Specimen trees.
Specimen trees, okay, sorry, I don't wanna misspeak. The larger specimen trees, they have no problem paying for those to be removed, right? I mean, they, they understand that they don't owe it, but they're happy to do that because they can see the city wanting that to be paid. So, I mean, I can make that offer tonight on their behalf, that they would pay for the specimen tree removal, which, Clayton, how much is that?
Seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars. But, you know, I think everyone would understand from a business standpoint, that when we've relied on these documents, and then, you know, we're coming in again after we've already paid $2 million in all the other infrastructure, we're paying another $1 million for Seahawk Cove, with no impact fee credits, nothing, that's just a million dollars to build it. All of the other infrastructure that has to be done for this, you know, portion of the property. Um, and then to add another 200 some odd thousand dollars in an Arbor fee that technically we've already paid, I mean, that's a killer for the project, right? And, and this is a good project, it's a $50 million revenue benefit for the city, it is what the city has been asking for, the city has been asking for commercial, we have tried to bring commercial for years, and it has just not been able to come together until now. We have everything ready to go. Like I said, because of our timing, we do need to move this forward tonight in some fashion, some way, shape, or form. Um, so, you know, we'd like to move forward with it in reliance on the Arbor fee that's already been paid, under the original documents. So, again, I'm ha, I mean, I can stand up here all night and, and talk about this with you guys, but I don't wanna keep going over the same things. Commissioner Diaz, you look like you have a question.
We have to, we have to.
Yeah, I know, I know.
If I can, real quick, now it's my turn, if I can. I want a couple, a number of things here, if I can.
My questions are getting answered.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, let's start with-
Just listening.
Anthony, have there been any or, I'm gonna back up here for a second. You have to understand, Trees and Tree City USA, that's our brand.
Sure.
And that we are, we will be held accountable, and these funds are not just something where you're paying a tax, and you're just giving, you know, the government money to spend.
Sure.
You're cutting down trees in our community.
Yes.
And these, this money is going to replace those trees in other parts of the city.
We totally understand.
This is a dollar for dollar, we're not taking. Now, I understand Commissioner doesn't like that, that, and that's okay.
Objection, objection. And, and, no, I, I'm, Mr. Parliamentarian, objection.
Please answer, please, please.
Point of order.
Please.
And I, and I object as a point of order. You're editorializing from the chair, if you'd like to debate the issue from the chair, you should relinquish the chair. Mr. Parliamentarian, is that correct?
No, I would ask, I-
Ask your question to the attorney. Ask your question to the attorney, the chair.
I mean, I, I, right now, I'm not really in a position to kind of draw the line when the Commission is debating amongst themselves as to-
Yeah.
-how to resolve an issue?
Maybe I misunderstood.
In which case, I mean, and who's gonna chair? But, I mean, if you were gonna come and advocate for something of your own interest, then I would agree with the Commissioner that you have to relinquish the chair, but-
No, I just have a question, and maybe I misunderstood. I heard that the, that the Arbor ordinance came up during the last Commission meeting, and you voted against it, that you have serious concerns. Please, and correct me, this is where I need correction. And that you're against this, that, that it should be, it should go to the Supreme Court, or that it should be battled out in the courts, is what you said, and that you thought it was unconstitutional. It, am I misinterpreting what you said?
Point of order, again, you're editorializing, and you're putting words in my mouth, and you're, and, and you're debating from the chair.
No, I'm asking you to please explain your position.
If you're gonna debate from the chair, you should vacate the chair.
I'm asking you to please clarify what you said.
Come back to this person right here.
All right. I, I'll, I'll, without an answer, I'll take it the way I thought I heard it. Okay. So, at any rate, let's move on. So, since 2015, so, what we have is a original, the argument from the city is, is taking out the trees where the Blake Apartments cost you roughly 150,000. To move on to this next partial and clear the trees, theirs, 227,000, have our Arbor fees grown so significantly that clearing one land is, a big parcel land is 150, but now clearing a secondary piece is an additional 227, have our, since 2015, have our fees gone up? Are you aware? Because there's no way that those two numbers push together.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Terrill and Roll Director of Community Development, just for confirmation, the mitigation regarding the three specimen trees is $7,200. The code specifies how the mitigations calculated, so it's not a, a fee set. It is based on, they submitted a tree survey for the removal of 300-plus trees, and they give a survey of the caliber, the size of all of those trees being removed. And so, the city Arborists review their tree survey, and the list of all the trees removed, and the mitigation is calculated based on the tree sizes as specified in the code. It's, it's not changed. Just another note, the site where the Blake was was six point something acres, as City Attorney referenced, but this site is eight plus acres. And the size of the parcel has nothing to do with the number of trees, you can have a 10-acre parcel with fewer trees. So, anyway, the fee is based on the tree survey submitted by the applicant and calculated per the code. And that is where the two, staff follows the code, the Commission can make a decision, but staff follows the code, and based on the tree survey that they submitted, the mitigation for the 227, 400, including the three specimen trees, was that amount per the code.
Okay, so, what I'm just trying, adding up, I'm making myself clear. If it included all of the parcels, why would it have been $140,000 then and 227 now? Does that make sense? If it included everything, wouldn't it have been a higher amount to begin with? Does that make sense? Am I making myself clear? I just don't, I, I see a disconnect, I think it's making, what it's saying, it's speaking to, it's a separate project.
Well, Mr. Mayor, typically, the tree mitigation comes into question for a specific development or project, as the City Attorney says, so, all of that background that he gave you, that the mitigation on the city's records was tied specifically to the, the Blake site development.
I think that's what I'm trying to say.
So, it's, it's, um, if there was no development, that has nothing to do with your decisions, I don't know about the development agreements, but it would not have included this site, because there was no development proposed for this site back then.
I understand. I'm trying to reinforce the point.
No, I, I just, yeah.
All right, so, I got a couple of other points here. First of all, again, the, the, the City Attorney believes that this would require a waiver. In other words, he's saying that it was, this is a separate project. It, the, the City Attorney has, again, defined this project as the Blake Apartments that required this payment. And now, we have the Deputy Mayor, who is sitting here, that says he was on the Commission at the time, and remembers it specifically being a separate project. Then we have, you, you were saying, with all due respect, representing your client, you're saying that the infrastructure and roads and everything were put in?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, they were, but now you're gonna put in more roads for this particular project?
We are.
So, in other, well, I'm trying to make a point here, is that, yes, all those roads were laid out for that project, that you're defining as a project, and, but, but none of the roads were put on this piece of property that will be required to finish this property. This property is separate, and those roads are not there. They are part of this oncoming, and will be laid in place when the trees come down.
If, if I may, I would, I would agree with you if "project" were not capitalized. But "project" is a defined term.
Correct.
So, from a legal perspective, and I'm a lawyer, so I'm sorry if I'm all caught up in the detail of the document, but, I mean, Anthony is too, so, you know, it defines the project as both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard. It's, and, and there is a very specific reference to the project. And then there's another very specific reference to the initial phase, which is the Blake, it defines that as the Blake. So, as a lawyer, as a lawyer-
And you're making a valid point, because I, I'm reading it, too.
Okay.
You're making a valid point, and I wanna dig further into that.
Sure, please do, but, but you see where we are coming from, that, you know, we could have used the term "initial phase" for the Arbor fee very easily, if that was what was intended.
But, that's your argument, okay, and I get it. So, you have to understand, again, boy, we're gonna waive this, so, and then, again, we all have to understand, if we say, if we waive this, as the City Attorney is saying, then when the rest of the development comes along on those, on that same parcel, that means we have to continue waiving. This is the first Arbor fee on-
Well, it's not a waiver.
-what we can argue about.
Right.
Well, again, our legal advice is telling us it requires a waiver.
Anthony, did you say it requires a waiver? I don't, I don't-
I had mentioned a waiver, but I, you know, I could re, reframe this, I mean, they're, they're, I mean, we're arguing about, you know, an am, the claimed ambiguity in the contract.
Yeah.
I mean, so, that's, their position is, this is a contract term, and that they paid the Arbor fee for the entire Phase Two development for the Town Center.
Yeah.
So, that's their position, so.
I got you.
If you, if you, if you believe their position, and support their position, then I guess technically it's not a waiver, it was a waiver back in 2015.
Okay. And, and please understand, this is an intellectual, we're trying to figure it out.
That's okay.
We have a responsible, I feel as if I have a responsibility to the residents who are in the streets-
I totally understand.
-for those trees, and I will fight for our trees, and, like, it is, but, look, if it, if, you're doing a good job, you're all right, you're telling your side of the story, and I'm listening, I'm not, I'm not, like, shut, I'm not, don't intend to shut you down, I'm just trying to make arguments and point out all the points, the holes that I see, and I need you to respond. I'm not against it, so with that-
No, we appreciate that, we appreciate that.
Right, this is really important stuff.
Yes, and, and so, and we are not insensitive to this being a tree city-
The debate.
...and the importance of the trees. I don't want you to think that at all.
Okay.
The problem is, you know, we are going by the governing documents, we are going by the contracts, so as Anthony said.
Let me go to Commissioner Cruz, who's been so patient, and then we'll go on to Commissioner Baker. Thank you.
Was there, in 2015, was there a count on the trees for the Blake property?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, it, it would have been 2017, when they did the first modification. Um, you know, I know Anthony has given me an email today, where I believe the City Development Director, I, I don't know who that email was from, did give a calculation, and it was for the Blake property. But again, the intention was, just with all, as with all the other infrastructure for that first phase, that the fee was to be for the entire project. So, and it was, again, the time value of money, of paying it all upfront to the city, instead of it coming in in drips and drops.
You see where I'm going with it? If you had a count for the Blake area, then maybe you had a count for the new property that we're talking about today?
I, we're not required to do that-
Okay.
-until the final engineering pla, like, that's the phase where this becomes relevant.
Right.
So, I don't know if we had a tree survey for the rest of the property, but the intention was that this amount applied to the whole project-
Right.
-that the tree mitigation was done for the project, right?
I understand your point.
Right.
I'm just saying, if we had a total count of all the trees-
Right. I don't, I don't believe-
And if it was on a document or something?
I don't think that, but either-
And you're covered.
Exactly, no, I appreciate that, thank you. I mean, the bottom line is, in the documents that we do have, it says that we've paid it for the whole project, so-
But, but to the Commissioner's point, I mean, and I found it late this afternoon, and I gave you a copy-
I appreciate that.
...tonight, so, um, it talks about 6.45 acres, this is from the former Community Development Director, and he does have a tree count, says it's 1,097 trees in the project area, average tree size on the site, and, right, blah, blah, blah. So, he had a, he had-
So-
-an amount where he derived that $275,000 number that I had mentioned, that was in the first version of the first modification for the Blake Apartments.
So, that 1,000 trees, is that just the Blake area, or is that the whole project?
I think it's, it's on the six point, it's 6.45 acres, 6.5 acres, that's, that's the Blake.
Which is magically the exact same size as the Blake.
Give or take, I mean, it's-
Okay.
These were the numbers that Mr. Stevenson was using back in December of 2015. So, I, I mean, that's all I could find, um, this afternoon.
Would I, but just, that clarifying, so, it's 6.5 acres is, is, it says on that document, and it says 1,000 trees, and it says the original.
Yeah.
Yes, that document does say 6.5, okay.
Yeah, that's-
Commissioner Baker.
That was essentially my question, was wondering, since we have this final engineering agreement, do we have the, the tree survey? It would very easily show us where the, the dollars were spent.
So, he has it. Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Wouldn't the clarification be in the legal description, which would show if this was part of the property or not?
Yes, that's a good point, it, it does. If you look at the original development agreement, where it defines the property, and then it defines the project, um, yes, the property is defined as the, as the entirety of the, the whole thing, right? All phases, everything. And then if you go to the first modification, it references the property more particularly described in that certain development agreement, right? So, yes, the legal description in the original development agreement is the entirety of the property.
Can I ask where you found that in the original? Because I'm looking at it, and I see initial phase. I literally see it.
Um, go back up to the very first, um, the very first whereas, where it defines the property, and it goes, and it attaches Exhibit A-
Okay.
-with the legal. And then, it-
The property, right.
Right, and then it defines the project, right? As both, as the north side of 434 and both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard is, and two wheres is later, is the project. And then the initial phase of the project, located west of Michael Blake Boulevard, is called the initial phase.[1775.76] called the initial phase.
Right. And every time you see the word "property," it's capitalized.
Correct.
It doesn't define the whole property. To you, maybe it does, but to me, layperson right here...
But, well, but... But in the, in the, it says "project," so that means, if you say "project," it means the whole phase development.
It says "initial phase" of the development project.
No, it says, if you look at the third whereas, on the development agreement of 2015, it says this will construct a phase project, development project, on the property which is generally located in fronting the north side of State Road 434 and both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard that is keeping in characteristics of the town center policies known as the project. And then it goes on to say about the initial phase, which is the...
West.
...west of Michael Blake, which is two or more residential apartment buildings in mixed use, which is the initial phase.
Right.
The project is the entire thing, initial phase is just the first phase.
Which is what this is about. So, this is about the initial phase of the project in 2015, is what is the agreement in the initial phase, and then to me, the secondary, 2017 document continues the secondary phase, and now we're here for the third phase.
No, well, actually, just, just, the, the first modification is still, still dealing with the project, and it was ascribing certain, let me get to it.
Phases, right. To me, it's phases.
No, it's really, it's, it's more, the first modification was to include some restrictions on the Blake and the adjusted city arbor fee. That was the purpose of the first modification. So, there's finished floor elevation restrictions, there's balcony restrictions, and signage and lighting, performance standard, and maintenance security, there's a dwelling unit limitation in there. So, there, there's more in there than just, just the arbor fee. So, that was still, and, and, again, if that were intended to be just the initial phase, then the term "initial phase" could have very easily been used in that. So, we can go around and around it, but that's, that's...
I got to put, how about section two? Yeah, again, I'll let you go first.
You know, and, you guys are right. I mean, we could go in circles here forever. And, and, and like my colleagues, I, I too met with, with Mayor Parteica, but my initial questions, which then I followed up today with Mr. Donigan, were all about the stormwater situation there and how much infrastructure was actually put in place to get to the water bag, which was my main concern, of volume of water.
Right.
Um, but, there's no secret that I get animated by math and numbers. Let me, let me put in perspective, because we keep on throwing these numbers, and the mayor was asking, in a, in a way to make his point, but just to answer your question when you were saying that some of these fees weren't adding up to you, and, and by imposing an additional fee upon the investor, you have to look at the rate of return of a project, okay? This is exactly how, in a completely separate conversation, we end up with a storage unit on Tuscaloosa Road, because you have to start looking at what the rates are and the cap rates. In today's dollars, because the investor at the time decided to use a paid upfront, a, you know, TVM calculation on that money, in today's dollars, we're asking that investor to pay $376,000, because there's a 1.89 time, inflation-adjusted rate...
Right.
...to what today's dollars are. And, keep in mind, 10 years ago, we were talking about a significantly lower, you know, compounding rate than we did just in the last couple of years. So, you could imagine if we were talking just in the microcosm of, let's say, the last, you know, six to eight quarters, these numbers would be actually, you know, close to double versus, you know, 1.89, which is where we're at right now. We're asking someone that is investing and has invested in roads without getting any additional credit, okay? Infrastructure for, 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 for the utilities and what have you, an additional $376,000 to put their project together. I mean, again, it goes back to, and I use the term "confusion" just because I'm trying to be polite about it. It seems that, you know, we, we keep on having to come back to, you know, the city's thinking one thing and capital's thinking another. And, you know, it's funny that there's, there's a saying that, you know, who makes, you know, who makes the rules? Well, whoever has the gold makes the rules. Well, usually, capital follows capital, and there's, there's, that's why there's capital flow. And, you know, investors don't make mistakes like this, because this is figured into a formula, and it is down to the penny pound in Deutschmark how this is going to be put together. So, just for my colleagues, you know, because, like I've mentioned in other contexts, you know, we're usually all working off different sets of facts. The total nominal amount being paid is $376,000 for something that they had already subscribed to early on, and the reason I'm using the term "subscribed" is because the easiest way to put it into context for everybody listening, have you ever tried to subscribe to something, maybe software, online, and it says, hey, if you pay monthly, it's this much a month, but we're going to give you a 30% discount if you pay the, you know, 12 months upfront, and you pay for the whole year? That's literally what these folks did many, many years ago in 2017, and maybe the project would have had a conversation in 2020, but obviously, we had something else going on in the country in 2020, you know, March of 2020 onward. Maybe the conversation would have been in 2017, maybe the conversation would have been in 2021. But now, capital has caught up with the project, and we're in $20,000, asking somebody to pay an additional $376,000 that they did not expect to pay, just because, again, there's this arbitrary fee that is being, being put in, and they've graciously offered to pay for the other three specimen trees, you know, at their, so, let's see, 404 is asking for the C. Hockov extension, okay? Um, I guess the final engineering and site plan for that, the final plat, waiving the additional fee that, I mean, the city has not met the burden that is owed to them. Within the removal, they're agreeing to pay, I think it was $7,200 that Ms. Ruhl said would be, you know, I guess, per tree?
Yes. I, I think that's the total, for the specimen trees.
Or that total, okay. And then, and then approving the development agreement. I mean, at this point now, I mean, we've, we've gone in circles. I, I would say that if, if my colleagues are ready, we should make a motion and go ahead and move forward with this.
I think a couple people have a couple more questions. Commissioner Baker?
I think I just have one point. If we mentioned there were 1,097 trees in the original agreement, there's only 306 in this one. So, just a point for me.
Yeah, different sizes.
Yeah, different sizes, but, talking about acreage, and just for a little bit of a reference point.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes, just one more reference regarding Page Two of Seven for the 2017 first modification. Under 3A, it talks about improvements to the city collector road system, which is Michael Blake Boulevard and Tree Swallow Drive, you know, so, so it's talking about this vicinity for transportation. I'm assuming it's going to be talking about the same property for trees. I believe if they can provide proof of payment for the 133,500, it will show that this has been taken care of. I have not seen that proof of payment yet. I've only seen an invoice, so, so that would not provide the burden of proof that it's been paid, but if we did receive that, then I would be in agreeance that this has been taken care of.
Okay. I don't think anyone would disagree that it's been paid, but if you'd like to see that, you have the right to see that. I'd like to...
We'd be happy to track that down. That's no problem.
There's an argument. I would like to point out that the document that says north and south of Michael Blake Boulevard is one, but it's not the one that talks about trees. The one that, now, what, the one...
But the definition, yeah, it does.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What I'm reading here is the, the, this agreement, Section 21, I'm sorry, let me give you the date. This document also in 2015, right? This is the one, Winter Springs Holding Development...
So, you're in the original development agreement?
Uh, there were three, yeah, right. Okay, so, but what it does say, the original, also says, under Section 21, is, however, if the, blah, 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 so, if developer fails to receive building permits and substantially commence construction of the initial phase of the project within three years of the effective date, so, you're saying, so you have to get that done within three years, right?
But notice that we used initial phase.
And it's been 10 years.
It's initial phase. That was for the Blake. Initial phase refers to the Blake. So, I know, I'm sorry, but...
You keep interchanging all of these, just keep, so you...
But I'm not interchanging it. The document is choosing which ones to use. So, it was specifically...
I would argue, it, it sounds as if it's going, I guess either one of us can use that out.
But it's capitalized. It's capitalized, so...
And if you look at one, item one on Page Two of the 2015 original agreement, which, which is the original document, which still is in effect, it says under recitals, property, initial phase, town center policies, it, it provides those references.
Mm-hmm.
So, Mayor?
Yeah.
Two things. One, I was here with Randy Stevenson, so were a couple other people here, and if he specifically said 6.5 acres and that's what he was targeting, he didn't make that mistake. That wasn't a mistake on his part on the development side. The community development team then, much like the community development team now, followed the guidelines that were given. So, his 6.5, to me, would be what he was intending. So, it's the intention. If lawyers sat down, intention is 6.5, it's there. We are tree city, we're eliminating... Commissioner Baker, you said 309 more trees?
Something along that line.
Okay.
I closed out of that one.
There's a fee attached to that. It's separate to me. As far as I'm concerned, these are two separate entities, two separate processes, because I was very clear, and I held clear in my concept. Lawyers went to write it after leaving the dais. That's how it was there. So, for me, it's, I don't believe Randy made a mistake in his 6.5 calculation, and I don't, for me, I don't believe that it's, my, my intention is it's all separate projects down the line. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. So, there was a lively debate, and again, and I hope you...
One last question, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Can anyone tell me what the tax benefits would be for this project, the entire project?
It's a $50 million tax base, so...
Substantial.
I don't know what the exact numbers are, but I think it would be large.
Oh, yeah. 10, 15,000 a year.
Yeah, there's, and I would like to acknowledge...
10,000 to 15,000 a year.
...former mayor. Sir, you, you know, you really, I did not meet with you, but, but you, you served your community very well, and you're representing your, your, your clients well. Madam, you're doing so as well. It's professional. This is not something, and I hope that there's no, right? I know, it's 200, it's a quarter of a million dollars. We're talking about something lively.
Right.
Sorry about that.
He asked about the cost. I said that will cost to build it.
Yeah, okay. We're all, we, listen, I'll, I'll tell you personally, I, I'd really like to see this project go through.
Sure, so would we, yes.
Yeah. I'm really struggling, I, I, I'm going to fight for our trees, and, and I'm not voting, but I'm going to fight for our trees, and...
We understand.
If it's gray, and if it's, if it's not abundantly clear, and there's too many holes here, so, with that said, if there's no further...
We've got to go public input.
Uh, that's right. It is a public hearing item, so...
Thank you.
Ms. Schaefer?
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. I do have some hunt in this game, and the reason being, I live by there. And Sutton Crossing said that they put in the infrastructure. Well, I live in the Winter Springs Village, and they put in the infrastructure. If you're building on land that has no infrastructure, you have to put it in. Hello? Okay? So, the past mayor, I'm sorry, the past city manager told me that the street on Michael Blake was put in incorrectly. The Winter Springs Village flooded, and that happened after the building of the Blake. Oh, what a story. When that was finished and Ian hit, we were flooded, and we were never flooded before. So, maybe their infrastructure isn't such a great idea, okay? Maybe they don't have proper drainage ideas for it. There used to be two little ponds by the trail that are no longer there. The developer did also say, oh, by the way, in last year's budget that was approved, you all said that you're going to work on us not being flooded because of the Hammock Park, which should have been considered when they built the Michael Blake, okay? That's all I know, as a regular citizen that does this kind of stuff, okay? I know what I lived through and my neighbors lived through, and I now have flood insurance because of it, okay? And I told my neighbors at my HOA meeting to get flood insurance, because you're going to get flooded because of that kind of stuff. The developer also said, also said they put in the infrastructure. By the way, they did not pay for the light on 434. We, as taxpayers, all paid for that. So, you know, cry me a tune, okay? Also, let me put it this way, if somebody told me that I paid for something, and I'm fighting because I don't want to pay it, and I tell you, but, I'll pay you a little, doesn't that kind of sound a little strange? I would never pay for something if I'd already paid for it, but they're going to let you, they're going to give you a little. And last but not least, when the Blake was completed, along the trail, because of the trees that they took down, we have like a buffer right there along the trail, and that was done with the money for the taking down of the trees. And that is, that's what I lived through. I was at these meetings. I'm telling you what's happened, and I'm telling you that's what happened in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the commission specifically on this topic? Mr. Gallo?
Good evening, everyone. Art Gallo, 199 Andina Terrace. I, I think, listening to the discussion, to me, what it comes down to is a, a very poorly written legal document. That's the bottom line, and I think the lawyer here explained it. I think that when I look at the original charge of trees, if I got my notes right, 275, $275,750 was the first estimate. For some reason, then that got lowered to 149, so, to me, to counter Commissioner Diaz, that's a gain of $108,000 to the developer's side. Then, we had, went through our regular process, and we had another $227,400 in tree mitigation fees, and that, that's all totaled 335,000 to the developer's side. So, that, that's a wash on the plus and minus money column. But I, I believe in the reasonable man theory, and so, I, I couldn't for the life of me understand why a developer would pay for arbor fees for land that they had no plans yet to develop. Why would I put myself out there and say, I'm going to, I, I may not build anything on that property. Why do I have to pay an arbor fee to pull down trees I may not have a pull down? It makes no sense to me. I, I agree with Commissioner Resnix in that the original estimate was for a certain sized piece of land, and that's what this was for. Now, we're getting mixed up because it, it's just as "the" project. Well, I think the developer knows full well what "the" project was at the time, and so, I think legally, they got us over a barrel. I'm, I'm upset with this developer, and this is the way they want to come into the neighborhood again. So, I would like to see more than we're going to pay a little bit here of, for some trees. I understand the tax benefits to the city and all that, but to me, it's the principle of the thing. You're pulling a fast one. And I'm a resident here at the city, and you're not getting on my good side. Maybe that doesn't matter to you, but I'm one of many in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else that would like to address the commission? Ms. Benton?
Sheila Benton, 401 four seater Wood Court. It strikes me really, really odd that every one of these commissioners met with the attorney for the property owner. It strikes me really odd that you all seem to have a higher stock in what the property attorney said versus what the city attorney said. And that's odd. what the city attorney said. And that's odd. Your city attorney has given you his best recommendation. You all work for us. You don't work for the property attorney. Our city attorney told you his best understanding. And if you know the history of our city attorney, he doesn't speak very often, which makes when he does speak, you ought to really listen to what he says. There's a reason he says what he says when he said it. Now, knowing the history of Winter Springs, in the community and out there, you've got massive confusion. What are you all going to do to straighten this mess out? Because you might not be sitting there in 10 years. You might be sitting there, you might not. But you represent us. And I'm a little bit surprised that your city attorney told you his best understanding, and yet you're representing this attorney's position better than you're hearing your own. That's shocking to me. You all did not set up the arbor fees. That was done by someone else. Why don't you just take a deep breath and realize the city staff is here to help? They've given you your best evaluation of the situation. And you need to all remember, you worked for us. This, this, this ideal of, of meeting with the attorneys, having previewed whatever happened in your discussion, is a little unnerving for me, for the simple reason of what I just all demonstrated here. You all had already formed your opinion of what you thought happened. And when that city attorney told you his best legal position, he'd already bought into this. Think about it. How do you represent me? How do you represent the citizens of Winter Springs when you've already met with the property attorney and already formed an opinion? Appalling.
Anyone else? Mayor. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commission, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Attorney, Acting City Manager, Paul Partica, 1693 Winter Springs. Now, let's, let's correct a couple of things. Number one, I live in the city. I've been a proponent of this city and one of your advisors. I also speak on behalf of another citizen. Catalyst Development is part of this city, not just individual people. They are individual people also. They've been paying taxes, a whole lot more taxes than most of the individuals in the city. All right? So they are being represented by you. You're working, and Anthony's working for them too. Okay? It's a discussion right now on a document that, at the end of the day, is going to be a benefit to all of us. All right? I want to tell you about Tree Cities. I was here in 89 when we talked about this Tree City designation. It's a designation that meets certain criteria, and that's it. Doesn't mean that you stop cutting down trees. You stop doing development, then you'll keep all the cities. But what happened to, let's see, St. John's Landing, I think we knocked down a lot of trees. Winter Springs Village, I think we knocked down a lot of trees. Oh, how about the Town Center? We knocked down a lot of trees. Oh, how about Tusquilla? We knocked down a lot of trees. How about the Highlands? We knocked down a lot of trees, because that's part of development. But every time you develop, you add things. You add more trees. You grow. All these things are part of this. Now, what we want to do is develop a city. That's terrific. And we've been lacking for the past 10 or 15 or even 20 years. We got a chance to have a $50 million project to be able to get tax consequences here to help us on the wastewater treatment facilities and all the other costs that we have. Now, there's a little discussion. You've got a $50 million project, and we're talking about $250,000, if you want to get right down to it. All right? But at the end of the day, the principle is, as Ms. Benton said, you're right. We don't want to give any money. Why should we? We've already prepaid this stuff way back when. Now, of course, there was a discussion by Brian Fields in those days, and we paid for that. But that doesn't stop the fact that we prepaid that, and part of the adjusted arbor fee, which is in that document, says we effectively paid for everything for the future. Now, keep in mind, at the time, those trees weren't as big as they are now. They were smaller trees. But this is part of the prepayment program. Pay me now or pay me later. You know, you have a way of getting a college education in this state by starting very, very low when you're born. But if you don't pay when you're born, guess what? You're paying three times that amount in, when you actually go to school. This happens all the time. We prepaid this. We didn't know what was going to happen. We thought it was going to develop the year later. It didn't. 10 years later. Could be another 10 if we don't have this. All right? All we're trying to do is develop a great project for this city at a very nominal cost, however you want to do it. Okay? But don't say that we're not citizens of this, this city. Don't say that we don't want to pay our fair share of things. And don't say that other people have not cut down trees. Every one of these people here live in a home where they cut down trees.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank, thank you. So.
Great point.
Let's call the vote. Let's see what we could do. Let's move with this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks. They did pay the fees, however, when they cut the trees down, but that's okay. Hey, a separate note, and this has nothing to do with trees. If I can have one mulligan about stormwater, and I have one question, no follow-up. If, will the commission allow me? Can, is, as a city, can someone speak to, because there are concerns about stormwater, and we have had a history, since the city has significantly increased or improved, in my version, our stormwater standard since Hurricane Ian. Does this new project, where's that water going? What, how are we handling that? Are we comfortable with the way the stormwater coming off of that land and how it may affect Winter Springs Village or the Blake?
So I'm going to ask Mr. Lee Shu, the professional engineer in the Community Development Department, to come up and speak to that review.
Thanks.
But just for the record, the all-new development, since the city adopted the new stormwater design criteria, are applied to all new development projects. So this review would have been conducted under that criteria.
Thank you.
Mr. Shu?
Maybe then just, where's the water going?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Lee Shu. I'm a professional engineer with City Winter Springs.
Right into the mic.
City Winter Springs. Sorry. Yeah, so for the Blake apartment complex, it was, it designed a master pond for the entire site. And then it permitted 80% of impervious areas for each parcel, which, in other words, in each phases. So when this, this parcel comes in as its own phases, which is about 8.6 acres in size, and now it's been subdivided into four smaller phases, which, in other words, each of these smaller phases, the maximum impervious areas they can place down is 80%. So if we do math, it's raised 8.6 acres times 80%, which give us about 6.4, 6.6 acres of impervious areas. That's the entire amount of impervious, impervious, impervious areas that can be placed on this site. So in order for me to track it, we will ask them to provide a table every time for the amount of impervious areas that they're going to be constructing in each phase. That way, we can really be, you know, tracking down and calculating how much, you know, how much the pond can hold. As far as right now, the pond has capacity for this development based on the review and information presented. That's everything. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
When he says the pond, he means Lake Jessup, correct?
No.
No.
Okay, okay.
There's a, just for the, do we want to find out where, the pond is located off of the Cross Seminole Trail, north of State Road 434, and it would be east of the proposed development. It's an existing pond.
It's not on that particular lot. Yeah, it's, it, do we, it's public input. I thought we're done. Sorry, again.
No, civil engineer. We are the engineer record for Winter Springs Town Center. My name is Jason Mahoney. I'm with NV5, 6200 Lee Vista Boulevard, Orlando, Florida. And Lee is correct in that the entirety of Winter Springs Town Center was permitted to that master stormwater pond that's just east of the Cross Seminole Trail. So everything is collected in collection pipes under the roads and routed to that stormwater pond. It's routed, the largest pipe actually runs through the Dream Finders property. And so, and in addition to meeting all the city stormwater requirements, we also get a permit from St. John's River Water Management District. There's, there's a master stormwater permit. And then each time we come in for, on the development, such as the Blake, such as Wendy's, such as Starbucks, such as Dream Finders, we do what's called a modification to that permit, where we update the terms and conditions of that master stormwater pond. As long as we stay within that threshold of 80% impervious, and we demonstrate that we can convey the water, we meet all the applicable state requirements, and we get the permit that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. If there is no further discussion, I'd ask for a motion. It sounds like there's one of three. Pass, turn the whole thing down, pass it with keeping the tree mitigation costs in place, or waive tree mitigation.
I'll start. I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 404 with the proposed conditions presented within the Agenda Item.
Staff report.
Staff report, Agenda Item.
Or with the staff.
Yeah, the 227.
Staff recommendations. Okay, that would leave the, the tree costs in place.
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay. If there's not a second.
I'd like to see if we could modify that to say, with the proof of payment, then it would be approved.
I want the full 227 for paid.
Yeah, with the proof of payment, the entire amount has been paid.
One, three.
Point of order on the motion, though. There has not been any, there has not been anything presented that the payment was not made. In fact, it was commonly agreed upon by everybody that the payment was made. So.
I'm saying, yeah.
If the payment was made, you know, then at that point, we'd be waiving the, the fee altogether.
What I'm saying is that as staff, to me, it's two separate projects. So I'm saying this project here, or this iteration of a project, is separate to me, and I would approve this 404 item, because I'm asking for a second.
So the staff recommends that we keep the, or the, the way it's written. Actually, you're trying to speak. I'll let you.
Just one point.
Sorry.
Regardless of your decision, we do not have a record of the payment. Not suggesting it wasn't paid, but whatever decision you make regarding this Seahawk Cove extension, I think it would be the staff recommendation that the proof of payment be included as a condition of whatever decision you make. We internally have researched with finance and have not identified the payment of the 100-something-plus being discussed.
So. Okay, so, so back to the deputy mayor. Let me be very specific. You're making the motion that we approve this project, but hold the tree mitigation fees in place. Is that correct?
Yes, as it's presented by staff.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
That motion died for lack of a second, and Commissioner Bruce made a motion to approve 404 as long as we were able to get a proof of the deposits. So if Commissioner Bruce still has that motion on the table, I'd be, I'd second it.
Okay, so the motion.
Clarification on that motion.
Yeah, so it means waiving the additional tree mitigation fees that were proposed. So just, in other words, if, once we find out that the 133, which nobody's really arguing, but that's okay, we'll get proof of it, we waive any further fees for tree mitigation. So this would allow the development without paying any further tree mitigation fees.
I would not make a motion to say that we're going to waive a fee. I'm just going to say, make a motion to, to clarify that this fee has, was, was for the entire project instead of for the initial phase.
Fair.
Which, if you look, this legal description is for 45.687 acres, which would be the entire future development, the entire project.
So you want to send legal back to.
Okay. Motion's been made. I did, I lost you. It's not 45 acres, but that's, but that's okay.
Yes, the, yes, the legal description shows 45.687 acres for the entire project, which this agreement is for.
All right.
Therefore, I will modify or clarify my motion to state that. I make a motion that this project, what are we on? 404, Seahawk Cove Extension, State Road 434, 419, that we acknowledge that the mitigate, that the tree mitigation has been paid with proof of payment for this project, which will take care of the entire project and not just the initial phase.
Second.
Okay, fair. Motion's made. It's second. I know Commissioner Baker had a question.
I do.
But, yeah, if, everybody's okay, ask the question real quick for clarification.
Anthony, if you could clarify something on the first modification of development. It states that, let me find it again, sorry. It has, it states that the developer has submitted the final engineering plans. And the rest of this agreement is based on those final, I mean, that's the very first thing that it talks about, and it references the project as the final engineering plans. Were the final engineering plans for the entirety of the 45 acres or for the six acres?
When the first modification was approved.
Yes.
The first and the second version of the first modification.
Yes.
It was for the final engineering was for Michael Blake, I'm not Michael Blake, the Blake Apartments.
Okay.
Six and a half acre. And I believe it included Michael Blake Boulevard, too.
And it's, it's specifically called out in here as its own name, much like Seahawk Cove has a name in this modification. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion was made, and motion was made, excuse me, by Commissioner Bruce, for the record, seconded there with Commissioner Diaz and Christian.
And this motion, sorry, just for me, is, is inclusive of approving all of, all of the final engineering site plan, final plat waivers, all that, except for that language related to the tree.
Right. The language, as I understand the motion that was seconded, it would include approval as recommended by staff, with the exception that the arbor fee language in the draft development agreement for the Blake Commons be amended to remove any reference to an arbor fee.
Okay.
For this project.
And, and to include the $7,200 for the three specimen trees.
But they offered to pay for the specimen trees. Are you folks okay?
Yes.
For Commissioner Diaz and, okay, to allow them to pay for the three specimen trees?
Can you clarify the three specimen trees? Because you also had a recommendation in there to, to save the large oak.
There's a, it's referenced in the conditions, but the actual tree survey does not reflect removal of that tree. So it's just staff putting language to match what the tree survey indicates.
That will come back later.
Yeah.
But if we're making the point that they've already paid the fees, then they can remove that tree as well, later with no fees.
Uh, no, it's actually in the conditions that they're not going to remove it.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. That's not included at all. I apologize. I do stand corrected. I was mistaken. Sorry. Well.
We'll call the vote.
You said a present. Okay, so, call the vote.
Christian, you understand?
Yes. Okay. Commissioner, or Deputy Mayor Resnick?
No.
Commissioner Caruso?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
So the motion passes as it was written, the tree mitigation fees, other than the specimen trees are waived, and, and development moves forward to the next session.
With proof of payment.
Not waived, not waived, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'll stop using that word.
Yeah, they're being stricken.
And please follow up with us. Let us know if payment has been made or not.
Removed from the, from the development agreement for the Blake. Removed from the development agreement for the Blake.
Removed, yeah.
And if not, they make the payment and we're good to go.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Okay, that brings us to the regular agenda. Item 500, purchase of one Aqua Tech B10-1450 combination back truck by the Utilities Department. Is there a discussion on that? Do we, we've all, we can wait for the deputy mayor to come back?
Yes.
Okay. And then may, would your questions maybe be for the Utilities Director or for, I don't believe Holly's here.
For the good of the order.
She's in the lobby.
Yeah, she's here.
She's in the lobby.
Okay. Ms. Queen, if you're out there?
She's calling.
Okay. We're waiting on Deputy Mayor, anyway.
Sorry, I missed a question.
That's okay, just in case we don't have it yet. We're going to wait for the deputy mayor to come back real quick and, or actually, I think Commissioner Diaz, he can go ahead, I think, if you're comfortable. He can hear you. There's a speaker back there.
Yep, my, my point to my colleagues here, if we'd at least consider an option, and I mean, I'm fully aware that obviously we've all been briefed on this. And just to kind of follow up on a point that Ms. Benton had made where, you know, we may have discussed an issue with somebody other than the city, just keep in mind, the only party making a proposal here is the city. So, the only thing that we are hearing is the city's position on this truck. We're asking the residents to spend $692,832 for a truck where we don't really necessarily know. And I mean, I guess my, you know, all we're hearing is, because we say so, we're going to get a $50,000 credit, which comes out of thin air because that's not necessarily shown here in the documents where that valuation comes from. Obviously, if we look at the assets, it's not a fully depreciated asset at this point, from what I understand, but it may have been. But a 2002 truck, there should be plenty of parts available for additional maintenance. And I mean, we're asking our residents to always have to, you know, come up with more, come up with more. Well, here's a really good example where the city can stretch out with the current trucks that it has instead of buying a new one and perhaps even look at options for used from another municipality. I guess, I guess I'm not, I don't, I haven't heard a justification per se, other than, because we say so, to spend $692,832 on a truck. And that's really just all it is. I mean, I don't have a question for anybody. It's just for my colleagues here, just thought process.
Okay, there's no questions? Further discussion, Commissioner?
So, I'm not sure if it'll be a question for Holly or for Cleat, but I know you both know this, so how often is that truck in the shop getting repaired? And would you happen to know offhand in the past year or so what those costs were? I know I've heard things like, "It's down every other week," or "It's every other two weeks, it's in the shop, it's broken down, it's got to go." If you can just answer a little bit of that.
Thank you. Cleat Sonnier, Public Works and Utilities Director. This truck, the one we're talking about, the 2002, is my understanding from staff that it is broken down, consistently broken down. It's in the shop more than it's actually being used in the field and so it really has reached the maximum life cycle. And so, I have also tasked staff with finding out what the appraised value is of that vehicle. It's running around $25,000. The deal, if you will, on the trade-in value was double that amount. I've also been told that the current needs for that vehicle, the repair costs are in excess of $15,000 to $20,000 due to some of the equipment failures on it. It's been used. It's been very pampered and handled as best we can, but when you're in the shop more than you're out in the field, the level of efficiency and being able to capture approximately 1,000 catch patients throughout the city and making sure they're clean and functional, we felt it was need to pass that on. We have a 2017 and a 2000, I believe, 22 VAC truck that we currently use with the Water Utilities Department staff. They are in exceptionally good condition. The addition of this vehicle will not only save time to be able to have that vehicle in time for when we take over on October 1st from Viola's contract to maintain all the 57 lift stations throughout the city. That VAC truck will be utilized every day of the week, just about four to five days a week, to make sure all the sanitary sewer system is functional. There needs to be two vehicles, just FYI, one for raw water or clean water, the other one for septic or sanitary water. The new truck will go into sanitary service and be able to service all 57 lift stations. The 2017 model will then go to stormwater and they'll have a reliable and functional piece of equipment at a fairly reasonable price. The depreciated value, I believe we'd stated was at $168,000, which would be done through an interfund transfer. The new vehicle, if we were to go out and order one under state contract, this one, by the way, is under a contract, a piggyback contract, is my understanding correct, Ms. Queen? And it is readily available. We actually had them bring the equipment to the site. All of the utility staff went over it with a fine tooth comb, tested all the equipment, were very satisfied with its functionality. And it's also, as I mentioned, immediately available. To order one would be about a six to nine-month delay in being able to get it, which means we would have to endure taking that old 2002 vehicle through the wet season. So, I think it's a good, in my estimation, it's a good recommended purchase. It meets, it checks all the boxes and we can move forward.
Is that 15,000, 20,000 each time it needs to be repaired?
I can't, honest answer is, I don't know. I'm just hearing that's what this next round of repairs would cost.
And the payments for this truck would come from the Stormwater Utility Fund?
The used vehicle would be, Ms. Queen could answer that better than I can. Excuse me. The new vehicle will be purchased through the Water and Sewer Fund. It's a separate enterprise fund. And then the recoup of the $168,000 would go into the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the used truck. So, there's an offset there, if you will, on the total cost to the fund for the brand-new vehicle.
An offset, but not cash? Like a paper offset? You're just creating a liability.
I'm not sure what the actual financial term would be for that, but I believe it is a swap.
But ultimately, the enterprise fund is paying $700,000 almost for a new truck. That is replacing a truck that sometimes is down. So, let's just say, let's just say it was down this week. You have two other trucks. We didn't stop doing everything we were doing because that truck was down. We kept on doing it with the two trucks that we had.
We are, you know, it really is a matter of available funding and service delivery. If we have available funding, but the service delivery is lagging because the equipment is failing, then there's a price to pay on the back end of that called deferred maintenance over our systems, which then requires an additional workload to go and address that need. So, we could stretch it out and continue to use the 2002, but I think it would not, as I mentioned, be as an efficient plan of attack, if you will, coming into the wet season as it is in this process.
And there's no option for a pre-owned vehicle from another municipality?
We're not aware of one, sir. This one came to our, it's actually a larger truck than the one that we have with the takeover of the 57 lift stations by our operations staff. That includes the main lift stations, the master lift stations, which were much deeper. This system is able to vacuum out those wet wells that the, even our newest truck, the 2022, is not able to reach.
But the cost for these trucks comes from the enterprise funds?
That's correct. The 642,800, I can't read, $832 would come with a check disbursement from the enterprise fund, yes.
And we're paying cash for this.
That's correct.
And we asked our residents to pay an extra $800,000 in tax so we can buy a truck, not necessarily do everything else we were doing, which was the point I was making originally, that the money's not going to shovels in the ground, it's going towards all sorts of other things.
Yeah, like sucking up water that's, you know.
One at a time, one at a time, one at a time, one at a time. Okay, so, why don't we go with Commissioner Baker?
I was just going to say, that's two different funds. The $800,000 that we just approved is for stormwater. This purchase is coming from the other utility account.
Yeah, it's not the same.
Right, but it's being split. There's a split in the funding, isn't it?
No, there's a...
It comes out of two different funds and it's being split two ways and the depreciation is coming from two funds. Is that correct?
Let Holly, or Ms. Queen, excuse me.
Holly Queen, Finance Director. So, what's proposed in front of you is there is a transfer of the estimated value at the end of the fiscal year left on the current truck, which is approximately $168,000. I'm not sure, did you receive the document that I?
Is that a question for Christian?
Yes.
Well, we're looking at it. We might not have access because of the computer.
Oh, because of the internet. Okay, so, what's happening is the truck purchase is coming directly from the Water and Sewer Fund. That's where the check will be dispersed from. From there, we'll be transferring the vehicle that we currently have, the 2017 Aqua Truck. This is my rudimentary accounting that I threw together today. So, this is the estimated accumulated depreciation as of the end of the fiscal year of $157,000. The current value, the value of the truck that we're transferring originally was 325. That leaves $167,916 as the value of the asset. That would then transfer to the Stormwater Fund, which would then eat up, if you can go to the second page at the bottom. So, that would then eat up part of this $1,190,000 that you see here on the screen and it would push it up to the net position that'll be locked into capital assets in the Stormwater Fund, which means it's unbudgetable. So, the other portion to this agenda item is requesting to move $168,000 from a Capital Projects Fund for capital projects that did not get approved previously to cover the cash in the Stormwater Fund as a one-time transfer.
Other question? So, then maybe for Cleat, just to be sure. We have three trucks. One is going away, the oldest one, the 23-year-old truck that keeps breaking down is going away.
Yes, sir.
And we have a second truck that does not have nearly the capacity of this new truck is being moved, right? And then we're using this new truck because it has a reach and get down into those lift stations. It needs far more reach, far, it's a different animal, basically. And so, we're going to use that. We are still under a consent order due to lift station spills? Or spills in our wastewater system?
Yeah.
That would be a yes.
Yes.
I think we are under, and we are still under a warning letter as well, right?
Yes.
Well, we have a warning letter that is in play, yes.
Right, about wastewater spills. And so, this is intended to protect our environment, help keep those lift stations working and to be used when needed. And even in case during a storm, it can be used to assist in stormwater as well, if needed?
It would need to be processed and cleaned out.
That's right, yeah, because it would have wastewater. Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Seeing none, I'll make the motion to approve item 500.
Okay, I think we'll give Commissioner Bruce a moment.
No, I'm okay.
Okay, so, motion's made by the deputy mayor to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Baker. Christian?
Commissioner Caruso?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
No.
Commissioner Bruce?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Okay, and then item 501, the Human Bean Coffee Shop, Final Engineering and Site Plan Revision.
Hello again. Terrell Lynn, role Director of Community Development. This is the Human Bean Coffee Shop. On March 31st of this year, the City Commission approved their final engineering site plan, development agreement waivers, et cetera. The project is a quick serve coffee shop over at Venetian Square. The owner is a small business owner and her financing is, her project is subject to the available financing and very tight. So, at the request of the applicant, they are requesting that the areas on the plan approved by commission that reflect concrete, they would like to change that out to asphalt. Only the commission can make that change. Staff doesn't have the ability to do that, but we have had our engineer, Lee, Mr. Shu, review and for stormwater drainage, et cetera, the concrete and asphalt have the same rating. So, there's no change or impact to, from the project, but the City Commission would need to approve that change. In their packet, they've already submitted the site plans that reflect that and they actually have their site work permit issued already. So, once you make a decision on this, they're moving forward right now.
My phone.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions or discussion? No, we talked about this one a little bit. If there's no discussion, I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve item 501.
Second.
Okay, motions, I will say, is made by the deputy mayor Resnick and seconded by Commissioner Diaz. Christian?
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that then brings us to new business.
No.
Nope.
Who comes here?
Two more.
Sorry about that. You know what, I was looking at my notes, sorry about that, instead of the updated one. Okay, item 502, discussion on Section 2-28 addressing the mayor and city commission. And Commissioner Baker, I believe you would...
Yes. So, Senate Bill 268 has been filed and goes into effect July 1st. And what that bill does is anybody in public office is no longer going to be required to have their public, their address public information. So, in lieu of that, to protect the safety of people who are brave enough to come up and speak to the commission, I would like to also request that our ordinance be changed to strike out the address and only include city or unincorporated community for the record when they speak.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, anybody else want, I don't want to be the only, but so, I'll tell you, I just want to, if nobody else wants to talk, I will say, I have one big concern and that even in our city ordinances and things, it does state that, no, forgive me, but we don't have to listen to non-residents.
Correct.
So, I think it is very important, their specific address, eh, that's okay. I'll tell you, I'm probably not going to take up the thing, even though there's been shootings of legislators and things in the last couple of weeks. I'm not going to probably act on that move, but I am going to, I will, I really want to know, is somebody a resident or not? Other city commissions all over town, they do get that, they'll get a whole group of people to talk about abortion or, you know, fighting rights or different vaccinations and all those real divisive things and they'll bring in lots and lots of people. I want that freedom to say if they're not a resident.
Yeah, it's according to the ordinance, we would still have that and they would be required to state whether they live in Winter Springs or an unincorporated community outside of Winter Springs. And they would still be required to fill out our form, which would go to you and you could share with us any concerns.
Can we have their address on the blue form, but they don't have to state it publicly?
Correct, yeah, it's just about what they state publicly.
I have a question. Have we objected before when folks have come up and not been from the city, regardless of how...
Not historically, but there have been times many, many years ago where, like on some issue that the city doesn't even regulate, where I've seen in other cities and once here, like 20 years ago, when I first moved to town, there was a crowd of people and it was, and there was a whole bunch of people who were not from here. And again, I have no interest in stopping anyone unless it comes to one of those times where, you know, it's something... And again, we, I, I have no interest in stopping anyone unless it comes to one of those times where, you know, it's, uh, something pushed forward that.
So as long as you agree with it, it's okay for there to be a line out of the building from somebody outside the city?
I have never seen, nor have I ever stopped, anyone from speaking.
No, I'm just asking, I'm just, I'm trying to get some clarification for the understanding, so as long as you agree with them, it's okay.
You'd like clarification on what I said, that's interesting. Let me, let me clarify. So I have no history, nor would I foresee myself stopping, but our city ordinance does say that the people who get to be heard are, the only people who get to be heard are residents. Again, never stopped it, have no intention of stopping it, not interested in stopping it.
When we enforce it selectively is what you're saying. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand, you, you enforce it selectively, so as long as you agree with the folks coming in, you'll let them speak, but if you were to disagree with them and they were from outside, you'd enforce the ordinance?
If they overtook an endless going on and on.
Well, that's too many.
We have the, we have the ordinance.
I mean, that's a nice debate, may, may.
The, the ordinance states.
Do we wanna do this, yes or no? It's a yes or no question.
But the ordinance states majority vote is, can decline. It's not the mayor, it's not one person.
Correct. Correct.
And it doesn't, and it does not apply to propositions that are on the agenda for final action.
Correct.
Because under state law, there's a general public input provision, so it can be a non-resident, it could be anybody.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, it's really like, commission can exercise that, um, that provision.
Right, it's not.
Generally, under open, maybe open forum, before and after, that's not an agenda item, that's on proposition. But again, the commission would have to take that action.
Right, it's not the mayor.
Correct.
So to your proposal, just so I understand, Commissioner Baker, it is when they come up to speak to us, they can leave their address off?
Correct, only state, city, or unincorporated community in their, in their public, um, when they state their name.
But they fill it out on the blue form?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then just a reminder, the blue form, of course, is still a public record.
Okay. Um. Are we able to redact it?
So, and then, then what I wanted to reference is that, as well as, um, well, anyone can file for a public records exemption, assuming they meet criteria listed out. So even this exemption that you all, that you are citing, that's gonna go into law, if you all want to avail yourselves of that exemption, you would be required, per our policy, to fill out a form annually to claim that exemption. So anyone who's eligible for the exemption can do that, and then if a blue form was requested, we redact the information if we have that file on form.
Okay.
But otherwise, it's a public record, like anything else.
So based on what you're asking, based on the state statute, I agree with you.
Okay.
Did you make a motion?
So, well, it's not, so what we're asking for is direction to the city staff to bring back the legal documents, and then we'll be voting on it.
Yes.
We're not actually voting on it today.
Correct.
We need them to do their groundwork, is that correct, Anthony?
Oh.
Yes, we got the backup information, if it's the direction of the commission, we'll go back and, and make modification, and it's.
Yeah, I already.
No, no, I mean, he's got to get, he's gotta get the legal documents together, then we vote on it.
Okay.
And while we're, while we're changing that, is there any way that we could, um, clarify groups on who can speak for five minutes? Currently says representing a group or homeowners association, there's no defined group, it could be any group. Do we wanna define that more, or leave as is?
That's our choice.
Yeah, I'm, I, we can, we can, we can add that to the next agenda when they bring that back and discuss it, um, um.
Want us to look at that?
We wanna look at that.
I think groups mean many, many different things.
Yeah.
Facebook groups, which is.
Sure, it could be anything, so I think it needs to be more defined.
I mean, that.
And homeowner association, you know, to be able to be eligible, you have to be on the board. I think it should state all this.
Well, that should be a given, yeah. Well, it's not.
Like, you go. That's not.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can give it some more thought, but it could be somebody walking in with ten people, and they say that I represent the group of ten. They would get, if they recognized, one person speaks for all ten, they get five minutes, rather than, what, was it three, five, three minutes piece?
Three.
Thirty minutes, thirty minutes for ten, so.
It would, yeah, the, the city commission, you know, we've added public inputs, you know, we didn't used to, to have so many. We've added, and we've put things on video, we're trying to open things up, but, uh, five minutes, three minutes, as long as everybody gets treated the same.
Yep.
That's my thing. I don't just, if, I don't wanna do something to select groups out or individuals out, I wanna make sure everybody's treated the same.
Point of information on the, on the topic, and if Commissioner Baker can address this, I guess I'm, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm amused by we're having a solution for a problem that we're creating, I guess. What, what is the, like, what, what are you getting at with this, like, what, what?
I think that if we are protected for, um, our office that we hold, um, because we have controversial opinions or whatnot, uh, I think the people that are speaking to us should have that same, um.
Privilege.
Privilege as us, to not have their information on record.
But others before that have had that privilege of the anonymity from public record in general, so it, it's being extended.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
I mean, police officers, judges, you know, members of the court, um, have already had that privilege before. So now the legislature is proposing that all elected, instead of just certain electeds, have it. I mean, why wasn't it a problem for public input before? Why is it a problem now, I guess?
Um, honestly, I've asked about it before, and I've always felt this way, but I wasn't elected prior, so I brought it up at this time, 'cause it seemed like a good time.
I mean, 'cause, I mean, there's plenty of privileges that anybody would get, I mean, we have special parking when we go to the events. I mean, that bypasses all of the parking problems that everybody else in the city has. I mean, you know, once, you know, once we open that, I, I was just, I mean, I'm just curious why we're trying to find a solution for a problem that I don't even know exists or not.
Well, probably to give people a little bit more assurances that they could speak and, and not feel, uh, the burden of, of giving their address, and knowing that it's gonna be in the minutes, and that it's all online. And it's not just a public record where you have to request it, it's just, you Google their name and you'll find it, you'll find their address anytime they speak.
If it's okay, we'll have the city staff put paperwork together, we'll have the debate when it's on the agenda.
But, but watch this, here, let, let's just say the person comes in, let, let's say I go to that microphone, and I say, my name is Paul Diaz, and I don't say where I live. All of us have access to, you know, voter file, I mean, if they're a voter, we're gonna know what their address is, their political party, who they contributed to, that's all. I mean, and that's just a quick search, I mean, if I just put a name in, I'm good to go. I mean, again, you're, you have a solution to a problem that doesn't exist.
I think it's about making, um, the problem less, uh, the, it's making it less accessible. So it's not typing in somebody's name and saying, Winter Springs tonight at mission meeting. It's, you're making people work for being, to, to target people, versus making it easy for people to be targeted.
I think we have a lot of other issues, we can maybe have something added on there. What I would like, as the mayor and as that person, I would like a little input from the commission as well. Is that, the three-minute thing, I know that, you know, we, when I first started, I was really strict about it. And at three minutes, I was like, hey, time to go, and I tried to be polite and things, like, I tried to, like, kinda get eye contact with them. Um, I'd like some guidance, do you want me to be rigid, rigid, or do I, or when it's not super controversial, or when we have the former mayor? Like, when do I, you know, I, I would like a li, to include that conversation, again, not now, I don't wanna get into this now, it's nine-thirty. But at that future, when we talk about all these things, I'd like a little guidance from you folks, so I'm not out by myself. I think people may start thinking that I'm favoring one person over another person, and I want to be absolutely free of any interpretation of favoring somebody.
Yep.
So I'd like some guidance on that.
Good idea.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, so, uh, I think you got an idea there, Brian?
Yes, Christian and I will discuss, uh, tomorrow, and, uh, we'll involve Anthony's office.
Okay.
And, um, have it at a future meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And item five oh three, commission code of conduct discussion. And, was that, you want to start, you, deputy mayor?
Yes, okay, so there have been several code of conducts, um, there's a lot of people out there on Facebook and other such places that said, you know, I did this, I did this, I did that. Okay, let's put the truth on the table. There's been many over time, right? But we up here, whether it be, we can understand each other, we can't understand each other, we're talking too long, we're not talking too long, we need structure. We have none right now. Even though we have structure in place here, we're not following it. So whether it's, we go to the one of the, the pieces, if we take a look at the code of conducts, I assume everybody read it, one of the code of conducts were put in place, that one person gets to speak for five minutes, then their time is up, and it goes back around the dais, and they can speak again after everybody's had a chance to speak. That's a good way of going about it, that's somewhat similar to the federal way of doing things, but that stops people from just going off on tangents, just running amok, um, as far as things are concerned, you know, sometimes people say, well, I have a lot to say. That's fine, but we should be more clear and concise as to what we're doing here. So there's that piece of it, how long should we be speaking, what is the context for how we're going about it? This is the code of conduct for when we're up here, but also the code of conduct, as far as I'm concerned, with how we kinda govern ourselves as a group. And I don't see either of those things in place right now. You know, mayor, you're sitting next to me, for example, this, the way this would work is, everybody gets to say their piece. I know you like to say, okay, so, you know, sometimes you jump into multiple pieces, but you get to, like you did tonight, you, you hold it until the end. That way, it kinda goes, and then everybody gets heard with what they wanna say, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's kind of the intent of the two thousand and, I think it was the fifteen one. Um, and then there was also one, and Commissioner Bruce was up here, when we talked about the time limits, the time structure. That was one that was in place for a reason before, you know, we used to have meetings till midnight all the time. But as soon as we put the time limit, it was, people were a lot more concise, it was like, all right, we're outta here at eight-thirty, unless it's something very serious, then we're outta here by ten. And putting time constraints actually helps.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if you were done, and I wanna go before the, I'd like to let the commissioners go first. But I've often thought that when, and this kinda ties in the last conversation, folks are up there talking, they don't quite see the green lights behind them, because when you're at the podium, you don't see the timer necessarily, it's kinda in your, it's behind you. Um, and same thing with the commission, is, I know this is old school, it, that's the way they used to do it, and I think Oviedo still does it, they have three lights, and they're kinda, they're somewhat large, and they sit right here. And, and any commissioner that goes on a, right, they get five minutes, and the one that, you know, goes, you know, green, yellow, red?
Mm-hmm.
And then when, uh, whoever the resident is, there's a green, yellow, red right here in front of me, they're gonna see the red. Um, and that we all kinda watch, once that red light's on, it's like time to let somebody else speak, and, and, now here's the problem, I guess. Yeah, I see Christian and everybody cringing, yeah, who has to manage that?
You do. That's how we used to do it here, the mayor used to manage it.
You have to make sure I hit that thing, yeah, uh.
Well, no, the lights are automatic, but then what order they go on and everything like that, that's what, I mean, there used to be a box over here.
Yeah. I'm not talking about, like, who goes next, I mean, the timing of that.
Yeah.
It was on.
I think he just hit start, and it does its own thing.
Hit start, yeah.
It had its own timer attached to it, we up here didn't see it, but.
Well, they hit the button, maybe what you do is you hit the button, and, and, yeah, we'll get into it, we'll have that whole conversation, that can be part of that future conversation, too. I think we need to figure something out so that folks see, you know, it feels if I'm interrupting and, and, right, and I don't wanna give preferential treatment, that'll help me. And then everybody, including myself, will be limited to five minutes, and they won't have to stop talking.
Right.
Okay, um, what else, with this, is that really the bulk of where you're going, trying to limit?
That's the start, the starting point, I, I mean, I've got, I wanna give everybody else a chance to talk to.
Anybody else wanna discuss any of the past code of conducts, or things that are on the books now?
We talking about time load speaking, that we're on right now? So I'd like to say one thing, although I enjoy everybody's company here, I'm still trying to wrap my head around why we get outta here so late. And all the cities in central Florida, almost all of them, anyway, you know, they're all forty-five minutes, an hour-long meetings, maybe an hour and a half. I'm starting, I'm trying to understand that, where, why we're so deep with the time.
Is that rhetorical?
If anybody gets, if anybody gets. I mean, frankly, we have more.
Great question, we don't.
I'm not a talker, I like to listen more.
They literally don't have anybody show up, they have literally, I mean, their average meeting, the ci, they have a different methodology, they, they.
Well.
You know, they, they, the city manager meets and meets with everybody.
Let me give an example, we had a meeting that should've been over at seven-thirty, I would, I wanna say, and it ended up being nine-thirty.
Oh, last week, last meeting.
I'm just saying.
Mm-hmm.
Why, how do we get to that point?
We go round and round, maybe we need to push the vote more. I mean, our residents are also vocal, they wanna be here, people show up to.
Uh, they don't talk as much as.
Some of us, me?
Three people, I, I.
Yeah. I guess that's interpretation.
No, no, I'm not pointing fingers.
I know, okay. So that I don't need it more time, I'll, I'll stop talking, thanks. Any other discussion, or any suggestions for moving forward on this topic?
Uh, you want me to go with the next one?
Sure.
So, new business, right?
Okay, well, is, or so we're finished discussing, we're not taking any action?
Well, I'm gonna put everything on the table, and.
He's talking.
Are you still talking about the code of, yeah, he's still talking about code.
Yeah, we're, he's, he's gonna address new business as part of his revision, it sounds like.
Correct. As part of five oh three.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
So, new business was put in to, to, um, code of conduct, but the way new business is put in is that it was done specifically so that things could be put in, and or, well, I didn't remember about it, but now I wanna put it in, and we can vote on it, and we can do, it's too powerful of an item, as far as I'm concerned. And if used the way it was intended, then to me, it needs to be removed completely. Or changed so that the intent of new business is strictly just a, hey, I'd like to get this put on the next agenda, or a future agenda, and can we agree to get staff to do that? Because the way it's written right now, it allows for voting on it, it allows for some inertia attached to it.
Well, it actually specifically says not, should not be used for.
Anything that you could.
Final action.
Right.
Should, and that's the great area, get rid of the word should.
So it's only time, time-sensitive things might come up, that's really.
We could always talk about something we want in reports.
The city manager being fired.
I, I use it to my advantage, right?
Yeah.
But, I said, but that's, so looking at this, that was one of those things that was put in here purposefully, so it was like, hey, you know what, now I wanna add things to the agenda. We should not, in theory, in theory, that should be a conversation that happens at the city manager, the city manager then says, hey, this is what we wanna look forward to, hey, commissioners, do, we agree to this, but if we do it a different route, which is under new business, to me, we adjust that to say, this is how new business should be.
I, I firmly agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That will shorten the meetings, I think, dramatic, I mean, that alone.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I'm trying here.
No? Anthony's saying, no, do you have, if you have any guidance on our.
We don't lose it often.
Anthony?
If you have any guidance.
I mean, these, these are the commission rules, I mean.
So we set him up, yeah, okay, yeah, uh, so.
Report.
Is there a consensus for Anthony to kinda bring back any require, or to have this conversation, getting rid of new business?
No, there isn't consensus, because just as a point of order, under the charter, section four point oh five, any commissioner, as a duly-elected commissioner, has the right to bring forward any ordinance resolution item. And, I mean, no resolution or motion can, can override that, so I mean, you know, that's a charter right, so if that's the case, you know, we're talking about now changing our charter. And just keep in mind that we are using the old rules to limit somebody and create a new rule, so.
No.
Bruce and Gander here.
No, 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 no.
New business.
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, I think there's a misunderstanding there.
There's no misunderstanding, Mr. Mayor, uh, on the contrary, um, I think it's, it's pretty, pretty evident what Commissioner Resnick is trying to do, which is to silence minority positions. Um, by having an entire conversation about length of time, you have to understand that when one is a minority position on this commission, which many votes are four to one, you have to understand that that one might be twenty percent of the vote, but it's fifty percent of the opinion, because it is a binary, it's a yay or a nay. Therefore, that minority vote would be given by, by just mathematical, you know, formula, half of the time. half of the time. Commissioner Resnick's objective here, and I, and I would like to remind my fellow commissioners, today, Commissioner Resnick, your friend, comes for me, you smile, and you say, "No problem." But next time around, if he or someone else decides to come for you, the defense may not be there.
Okay.
Leaving, leaving it open to, you know, to, for example, and I, again, horrified just at the, at, at the, at, at the statement that, you know, we should have the, then run it through the city manager, for the city manager to decide if something's gonna be on the agenda, or what have you. We decide what goes on the agenda, not the city manager, the city manager works for the commission.
Hold on.
Absolutely, by Charter, the city manager works for the commission.
Let the gentleman finish.
He works at our, he works at our pleasure, we hire him, and we fire him, and I think that was pretty evident in November, that we were able to do that. And it was by 4-1, if I recall, Commissioner Resnick, so...
Yeah.
It might be great when you're on the majority, but it may not feel so good, you know, if you're in the minority, but then again, I mean, perhaps you're not here in two years, so that might make another difference, so, I don't know. I, I, I see that we're trying to create a solution to a problem that doesn't exist, because, quite frankly, we already have rules of order, in fact, just, not only under the Charter right now, but also even under, under Roberts' rules, we have, we have rules of order. So, you're creating a problem for your own solution, and just to silence the minority, and it's not going unnoticed, and I can remind you that perhaps you silenced me here, but you won't silence me out there. So just for the, for the, for the record.
You know, what's interesting in this conversation is that you really don't know the Charter at all, so, before you tell me, you're horrified at the statement...
One minute, Tommy, gave you four minutes.
There's another person who used to sit there, Cannon, who put all this in place, and the whole point of us as a group was to come in and remove the issues that Cannon created. I just want to put that out there, horrified at the statement, I heard a lot of language like that from him, too. The city manager, city staff, put the agenda together, we don't, we can ask for items added to it, this is not that. This is something that Cannon had added to the agenda for new business. Cannon also forced upon the second public input, right, and now you're gonna turn around to me and say, "Well, I'm trying to silence you." I'm not trying to silence you, I'm actually trying to make sure we streamline meetings. Now, things got out of control, but there's ways to bring back control. This is the same thing that would happen in a business, it's direction, it's guidance, it's proper management and how things work. You are welcome to kind of threaten me, attack me, tell me I'm stupid, call me whatever you want to do, but quite frankly, I'm here to represent every part of our city properly. We should get back to meetings that don't last at 9:45, 10:45, 11:45, okay? There are prior commissions, and that was the complaint by residents then. So, new business, the way I'm looking at it for everybody else, that was put on, it has too much attached to it that allows us to do. I'm asking, as a group, if we can have the city attorney look at it and say, "Hey, in new business, you can add something for a future agenda item, and that's that," or remove it completely. Because right now, it is too powerful.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Since I was directly named in this wonderful soliloquy that Commissioner Resnick has, has brought upon us here, a couple things, number one, we already have a method if we want to shorten the meetings, we can start with a motion to adjourn at a particular time, the rules would allow that, and we would be able to adjourn, and if we have not completed our, our business, then it'll get pushed to the next one. I bet you if you push the business to the next meeting a few times, bet you it'll streamline it real fast, because also, we're getting, we're getting these very heavy agendas, because by the way, it might be 9:45 now that we're having Commissioner Resnick's solution to a problem that doesn't exist. However, we've been, we had, let's see, one, two, three, four, five public hearings agenda, one, two, three, four, five, six items in the consent agenda, that, quite frankly, if we wanted to discuss all six, we would have then been here, you know, half hour, maybe an hour for each one of those, that's six hours right there, maybe three hours.
We all have the agenda, we know.
So, the, the reality is, is that perhaps the agenda's too long, not that a commissioner may be adding, because just keep in mind, Commissioner Resnick, you've made the point that, that you represent everyone, we are all elected citywide, obviously, and we are all advocates not only for our districts and for our neighborhoods, but we're also advocates for the entire city. And the ability to bring new business and to put an item on the agenda, as, you know, displeasurable as it may be for you, that maybe another commissioner in some other commission, at some other point in time, did something that you didn't like, is not fair for everybody in this body now, today, to have to now be subjected to your rules, because you mentioned a word that I thought was, I mean, you hit it on the nose, I cannot give you enough credit, you used the word "control." And the reality is that you are creating a solution to a problem that doesn't exist because you want control, so what you're saying is that the meeting is out of control because it's out of your control. And that is the problem, Commissioner Resnick, and you are, you are right now creating a problem, so then we are here for, you know, however long, because obviously, it requires the discussion, because you're trying to take people's ability to speak away, so, I mean, at, at this point now, I just hope you retract what you've already said, we'll call it a night, and we can move on to our reports.
So, new business, everybody else, should we work on that?
I'd like to, yeah, I would like to make some, I just want to be real clear, new business did not exist a couple of years ago, it was added, it's not part of the city charter, it's something that the commission, and, and with all due respect, I will defend my friend, Commissioner Cannon, I believe that he worked real hard at helping to get videos and helping to make sure that they're, added a public input at the end, he added, the vision was add clarity, add clarity, add, and, and open things up. With that all being said, because I will defend him, but any one of us, because of Commissioner Cannon, can add anything to the agenda, we all have that right. It doesn't have to be a new business item to ask, just go and meet with the city manager, send an email, say, "I'd like this brought up." That will not go away, I will fight anyone trying to impede on that right, every one of you should have the right, I would ask, please, send documents to, like, say you have something, you want to talk about whatever the issue, send in some documents so we can all read ahead of time, so we can all be prepared for the discussion, but you all have that right, and I will defend that to the end. This is, what we're saying is, look, we fired the acting city manager under new business, I do think we do need to rein that in, I don't think we should have these, like, just off-the-cuff surprises for the city staff, surprising people, asking questions, and catching everybody off guard, let's just simply follow procedure, it will shorten times, if you want something added, remember, it has to be printed and out and online by Wednesday before the meeting, so just be prepared, that's my, the way I see it, and, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Nope.
Anyone else? Okay, so, we're not voting on anything, but that, do we tie in, I'm sorry, Anthony, how is new business written in, as an ordinance or as part of the city charter?
Ordinance.
It's an ordinance, so, we, we passed that a couple of years ago.
Yes.
We can now take that away and just ask anybody with new business to put it in ahead of time.
Or rewrite it.
Or re, or...
Whatever the commission wants to do, but...
Well, add that to another agenda, let's come up with options, as you folks meet with the city commissioner, if you have, I, I'm sorry, with the city manager, or if you want to send thoughts about what you're thinking ahead of time, so that he can put something together?
I mean, the thought, I thought Commissioner Resnick said that you can bring items up under new business...
For future...
To, to ask the commission if they would like to place it on an agenda in the future, not for purposes of...
Correct.
Make, make, discussing and making decisions, right?
Correct.
And then, of course, alternatively, the commission always has the right to put an item on the agenda before the agenda's published.
Mm-hmm.
That's in, that's in the rules as well, you know, the thought there is, the commission's gonna put something on in advance, it gives the rest of the commission an opportunity to see what the item is, and if there's any background information, read it, so when you actually at the meeting, you can discuss it intelligently.
Okay, so...
Rather than on the fly. The new business, as it's written now, is, it's a Wild West show, right?
So, so just so I understand, so you're saying, get rid of the word "should," and, and try to limit the discussion under new business?
Right.
And make sure that everybody feels they can still add things on in the future, but just limit the conversation, and absolutely no voting, is that right?
Point of privilege.
Yeah.
Just to put it in context for my colleagues, you know, we all, we all have opinions and, and philosophies, some of us have philosophies that would be considered, you know, not acceptable by others, and, you know, some of my fellow commissioners have brought up the opportunities to have proclamations, or, which, you know, obviously then go through the mayor, but obviously there'd be, you know, a city component to it, as well as resolutions, and many would never even hear the, the conversation, because if, you know, let's just, I mean, just hypothetically, let's say we had a, a liberal proposal that was coming up, and there were three, you know, staunch conservatives, Commissioner Baker, you're not getting on that agenda. So, so just keep in mind that, again, you know, we always look at that poem, you know, first they came for me, but what happens is this, is that the difference between what we are discussing here is, Commissioner Resnick is bringing something up to have his opinion pushed through the commission. Keep in mind, if the opposite were true, if I were bringing this new item up, just keep in mind, under my philosophy, I would bring it up to prevent you folks from actually further regulating and adding more problems and more solutions that don't exist. In other words, it would be a less government solution versus a more government solution or intrusive solution. The, the fact that we're even discussing as a body today, in, in, in modern times, limiting what folks could say, so today, we pass an ordinance, or we ask the city to come up with language, what have you, to pass an ordinance that says, oh, whatever Commissioner Resnick wants on the agenda is what we're gonna get, and then next time, we're gonna get and say, you know what, it's taking way too long, three minutes a pop, to have all those folks come in here and tell us, you know, what their thoughts are on this or that, or, we might get and say, you know, we're, we're only hearing from the same four people, so we'll just go ahead and limit that, and, you know, it's gotta be something, somebody different. Hey, if you spoke in the first one, you can't speak in the second one, or maybe we'll just get rid of the second one altogether, maybe we'll get rid of the first one, we'll just start creating more rules and more rules and more regulations and more government, and the statist philosophy continues to grow and bloat. And yes, Commissioner Caruso, I have spoken for a few minutes on this, and probably longer than you would have liked, but guess what? It's because, again, the minority gets to speak for half the time, because they're half the opinion, and that's really where, where, where the point is. I would urge my colleagues to just completely walk away from this horrible idea that, that is coming in, because keep in mind, control is control from somebody else, not control of the meeting. There is control of the meeting, there are rules of order, there are already rules in the, in the system. In fact, if we actually enforce the rules we had, we'd be better off. And, and Mr. Mayor, just, you know, as a point, there are times you are debating from the chair, there are times you are advocating from the chair, there are times where there hasn't been the objection, there may have not just been the will for the objection, however, just keep in mind that those rules exist, and you could start getting, two or three of us start objecting every time you start speaking, and all of a sudden, we may have started with just a, we want three of us to agree on something, to put it on the agenda, but later on, it's gonna be, well, let's start enforcing the rules, and before you know it, the parliamentarian's gonna be the main, you know, the main act.
Okay.
I think, I think we got a lot, I, I think that what we're doing today is really dangerous, and I would urge my colleagues to have this just die as a cute conversation and be done with it.
Okay, good. So, I, my name was brought up, and I apologize, and I don't want to keep this, but, but I just keep hearing these double-edged swords, you were, moment, just only moments ago, you were saying, "End the meeting at a very specific time and shut them down," but now you're saying people don't have the right to speak, then you're saying, "We're trying to shut you down," but now you're threatening, you're saying, "I should be shut down, that I shouldn't be able to speak." I just don't understand the, I don't understand the theme, but, okay, let's move on.
Again, I, I think the commissioner misunderstands some new business, he thinks he's the smartest one in the room, we'll go with that. To the rest of my other commission dais...
Thank you, Commissioner Resnick.
You're right.
I really do appreciate that.
Okay, I have three other people, I've brought this up, since nobody else is bringing things up, yea or nay to asking for the city staff, or the, specifically the mayor and the city manager, to look into this aspect of our rules?
Thank you. Is there a consensus to hold this discussion and just simply look at, like, having a definition of the new business?
Can I just add something?
Yeah.
Since I sat here, looking straight ahead, not saying anything to anyone, or, I, I don't know why my name was brought up, but I'm gonna respond to that. So, my entire, my entire adult life, I've made my own decisions, I don't let people dictate what I do and what I say. I find it insulting that you sit there and you make us all try to feel like we have to do whatever Commissioner Resnick says. We are all able-bodied people who make our own decisions, we don't need anyone else up here to guide us how we should handle ourselves up here, or how we should vote, or how we should speak, and that's, that's it. Stop making all of us feel that we need to follow his lead. We're all grown adults, we all know what our job is here, and Mr. Mayor, that's, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. I think we have some direction being provided, we'll talk about tightening up new business, whether it passes or not passes, we'll talk about it at another meeting. Anything else under that item?
Anybody else? Okay, so, if we take a look at the way the original rules were put in place, reports, as it says right here, have some distinction, right? Mayor and commission shall be afforded an opportunity to report on various committees and groups on which they represent the cities and make brief comments in general. It's to be brief and not for purposes of proposing, city commissioner take final action on things. And so that's just for all of us to go back and take a look and see the purpose of reports, because I've started to see, and I'm sure others have too, that post-new-business, then reports also have a lot of new business attached to them, too. So, reports has a different structure than new business.
To just define reports better.
Correct, correct. Well, reports is, it's defined fairly well, but for all of us to take note, that this is for us, for what we've done out in the community, what we've done out in action, what we've been, you know, any meetings we've been to, a quick report, rather than, I've, been paying attention for a while, we seem to be saying, okay, now let's go back and talk about things to do here. So we're intermixing reports and new business.
Yeah.
So that's an area that I think, it's, it's there, I think it's a good, well-written, it's just for us to take a look at and see what its purpose is.
Yeah. I do want to stress, and, and I'm kind of catching my breath here, Commissioner Diaz, I give you my word, and I mean it, I'm sincere, and I know you may or may not believe me, but my intent has never and will never be to quiet down anyone, but we do have a common theme here, we're talking about, it's 10 o'clock, and why do our meetings go so much longer than everybody's? We have to streamline some, we have to accommodate and stream, this has been a constant thing for years, so, it, I give you my word, I will fight to make sure that you can have anything added to the agenda, I will fight to make sure that you are heard, I, I really will, I, I will commit to that now, but I think we have to find some ways of streamlining these meetings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And, and I appreciate those, those comments, and, and thank you, I appreciate that. The reason at 10 o'clock we're still having this conversation is because Commissioner Resnick has decided to bring his censorship agenda to the open. If he would have never brought this up, we wouldn't have been having this discussion for the last half hour, so, I mean, you know, what came first, the chicken or the egg? He just made a point, Commissioner Resnick just made a point, that the commission's reports what they are, and he said that the language is correct and that he likes it, but then we still need to look at it, because we still need to explore it somehow. Well, the commission's reports are very, are, are updates from the board, civic involvement and constituent concerns, so, yes, if someone is bringing something else up, at that time, we can go and discuss it, but again, that rule already exists, so there's no point in making the additional commentary other than to inflame, and there's plenty of pot stirring to go around. And there's plenty of pot stirring to go around. And unfortunately, it is, what happens is this. My arguments are rooted in a certain philosophy, yes. However, at the end of the day, you have to understand and call malevolence for what it is. And Commissioner Resnick is trying to make a very specific point to censor. Today, it is me. However, tomorrow, it may be somebody else. And you know what? Elections happen and two seats are up for grabs. Those two seats change or the two philosophies change in those two seats, we might be looking at a completely different 3-2 vote later on. So just keep in mind, these things change. I would say that we end discussion at this point now, move on to reports and end the night as quickly as possible without any, because there is no consensus to move forward. I would emphatically ask the, the city clerk to mention in the, in the, in the record that this seat emphatically opposes such, such tyranny from this board.
May I, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think that it's absolutely important, and I'm going to make a statement and you don't, won't like it, it doesn't matter. When you take a look at what are the rules and what is the structure and you read through things, that's important. Earlier, you said it's our agenda. Rules, agenda packets, the city manager shall have the authority and be responsible for preparing the city commissioner agenda for each city commission meeting. The importance of the nuances of learning this role are significant. Yet, it is my perspective in review and watching that Commissioner Diaz, you have come in here and said, I know everything, therefore I'm right. Respectfully, it takes time to learn this role. You went to EMO 1 and EMO 2. Maybe we need to redo those because these meetings can be a lot quicker. They can be better run. They can be a lot of other things, but they're not for this use. Okay? You've used significant words here, significant language to try to derail things and twice you've said, well, two seats are up, we'll see what else goes on. You're right, elections have consequences. We went through a cannon Boyle regime, which is why this whole city is in deferred maintenance. We didn't need that. Now we should be coming back here to fix the problems. I was elected back here because there were significant lies and I've come back. Now, you're choosing to attack myself tonight, the mayor, and so far Commissioner Caruso a few minutes ago and everything over being censored. At no point did I censor. I'm trying to have structure. We have none. And we had structure. It was deconstructed by several others who sat here before. We had a timeline structure. By the way, we can't just call the time because we have a specific ordinance that says otherwise. So we can either choose as a board to work together and create structure as we would in a home, in a business environment, inside city, HR would appreciate it, or up here on the dais. Or we can continue with the Wild West. Those are the pieces I've pulled out so far to create structure. I have myself so far. I have, what I'm counting is four other people and you're the only one dissenting from creating structure. And I'll leave it at that. So for me, so far, we've talked about new business, time limit, and I mentioned reports just so that we all go back and take a look and see the purpose of reports. So it's there.
Okay. So if I understand, and just want to make sure, you're just, that we're handing to Brian tonight. We'd like to talk about handling of, and being added to the agenda, talking about public input and how we're going to define that, the time limits and how strict I'm going to be. And, and, right? And then we're also going to talk about efficiency of the meetings, whether that be a light here and each person gets five minutes and, you know, that stops or, and that a new business has a limitation that you have to just do it ahead of time or you, however we go, but we're going to have this conversation about trying to shorten up the meetings simply by being more efficient. Is that, and I know that we have one to center. Is that?
Yes.
Do we have a consensus on that? Commissioner Bruce?
Well, Mr. Mayor, point, point of privilege. Yeah, I'm happy to have a substantive policy debate, but I respectfully ask that the chair ask Commissioner Resnick in particular to refrain from condescending language and tone.
Sir, you, you're, you're.
I may be combative, but I'm not condescending. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, point of order, point of order, Mr. Mayor, I've got the floor.
You get your minute, you get your five minutes. Go ahead.
The, the, the statements that Commissioner Resnick made, you can play the tape back. Mysteriously, today, we don't have internet. I've got plenty of internet here. You know, we can, we can, we can play the audio back. The, the condescending language and tone from Commissioner Resnick was completely out of order and the chair did not call it out. And I just wanted to call that out.
Wow. You call this treasonous.
Right, but I was not.
You should listen to yourself.
I may be combative, but I'm not, you know what? I, I will be an advocate, I will be an advocate for liberty, I will be an advocate for freedom, and I'll be advocate for the people. And I, and I will not, and I will not apologize for being an advocate for the people.
I apologize. I took the bait, I'm sorry. I apologize. So I think we've given direction and if that's okay, we'll move on to the next item?
We move on to new business?
Yeah, now we can go on to new business.
There hasn't been direction.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Nobody gave us any direction.
Okay. Anyone have new business? Commissioner Caruso?
This is a resolution that I would like. I'm requesting the city attorney to prepare a resolution where every Commissioner votes in support of Winter Springs remaining a city and we will not support the idea of unincorporating. Please, please have this for the next regular agenda, not consent.
So you would like something put together? Just want to clarify, just affirming each member's support of the city.
Yes.
So those listening, there are lots of rumors about disbanding the city and getting rid of the city altogether, getting rid of the police department, getting rid of different things. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a consensus about having a conversation like that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I'm seeing three heads shaking, yes.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Again, that's one of those things that anyone can have it added, but are we really going to have that conversation? Okay. Then Brian, you got notes out?
Yes, we will. Commissioner Caruso can forward draft language that he has to Anthony and myself and we can prepare something for consideration at a future meeting.
So that would be a resolution that we would all vote in support of?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. And there are new business at this time. Again, you do have some time where you can still have something added with support documentation. It doesn't have to be tonight. Sir?
Under new business, and this might be for the chief, just really fast, I had a community member reach out to me for the electric bikes and he said he purchased helmets and left them with you. Or the police department?
Probably the police department. I'll check and do it.
Okay. I think the original intent was he contacted the schools and they wanted nothing to do with it, but maybe a way to distribute them to our, with the e-bikes thing. Okay.
And at the very minimum, toys at Christmas. We got a big program.
Supplies for school.
Yeah, yeah. School supplies are needed right now too with the police department. Sorry. Any other new business?
That's it for me.
Okay. Then we will go on to reports. Brian?
Brian. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I'll keep it brief tonight. Many of you in the, many residents and some of you all have seen some of the progress that started last week with the debris removal that Zulu's performing. We will be continuing to do updates. I think we did a couple of social media posts or at least one last week. That work will be continuing for, over the next several weeks and we will continue to update the city website accordingly as that work progresses along with our other communication platforms. Just wanted to share that with you all. And then the only other thing I had tonight was obviously, just on behalf of the staff at the city, we wanted to say that we are, our thoughts are with Kevin and his family during this difficult time and we are all collectively here to support him and his family during this time of loss, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Anthony?
No.
I have no report. Commissioner Caruso?
For Kevin and his family, all of our condolences to his family on his loss. Also, I'm looking forward to the 4th of July event. Can't wait for that. Got my special outfits ready for it, red, white and blue. Other than that, also on the creeks, Brian, that you brought it up, I think there might be a little bit of confusion on social media about what's actually getting done, what areas are getting done, what areas are not getting done. I don't know if we can possibly get some kind of clarity for the, the people on social media in the posts or, I'm sure Matt can get something together.
Yes, we can certainly work on providing some clarification as far as what the scope was under the RCS agreement for the debris removal. And we'll, we'll look to do the same thing for sediment removal as well so that there's a very clear understanding of what was covered through these programs.
Good, good. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Mayor?
Okay. Certainly our, our thoughts do in fact go out on behalf of the whole city and I know everyone here is thinking of our city. Captain Sweet and let's see, yeah, 4th of July will be an awesome event as it always is. I'd like to, chief, I'd like to formally send out a thank you to Captain Ramato for coming and speaking at the Tuscaloosa Homeowners Association's meeting, nicely attended. He did a great job, nice presentation, talking about fraud and took lots of general questions about law enforcement, policing in Winter Springs, got to brag about how safe our city is and low crime and, you know, kind of give out some stats and talk about programs like if you're on vacation, police will do a, you know, house check like on a daily basis and all kinds of other wonderful kids programs and all the great things that the city, that the police department particularly, under the chief's guidance, does that really is spectacular. Let's see, I, I will, I, you know, I don't want to be divisive, but I just in closing want to say that I am deeply disappointed in that vote about the trees. That two, that quarter of a million dollars just put a bullet in our tree giveaway program. The unintended consequences are, when you come in, you cut down a tree, you replace a tree somewhere else, we just lost the funding for that and we just put a bullet in that, I think. And I'll say personally, it's a mistake and I'm disappointed. We'll move forward. I'm done.
Commissioner Diaz?
I too would like to, to, to offer our condolences to the city manager and his family on, on, on his loss. Obviously that, you know, that, that, we've all shared that and I think we all take that as a, as a city and as a body as well. I would like to take a moment to share a personal milestone that holds special meaning for me and I believe for our community as well. This Sunday, I'll be formally inducted as the president of Rotary Club of Winter Springs for the 2025-2026 Rotary Year, which will begin now in July. It'll run through the next, through the following June. My, my Rotary journey actually began many years ago in, in another county, another club. But here in Winter Springs, it started first at the Board of Directors and then later elected as president-elect. And now I step into the role of president and then I'll be following that with a year as, as immediate past president. So it's a three-year leadership commitment to the club and I'm honored that the members of our club place their trust in me. Just to kind of share with the city, Rotary is not just another club. It's actually the most impactful charitable volunteer organization in all of Winter Springs. It raises and distributes more money than any other volunteer group in our city. One visible legacy, for example, is the Veterans Memorial across from, over in the, in, near the town center. That was, was designed, funded and built by the Rotary Club of Winter Springs. Now, around the world, Rotary is a force for good. And as, as we sit here tonight, Rotarians from all over the globe are gathered in Calgary for an international convention. And I definitely look forward to representing Winter Springs as I work with other club presidents across District 6980, throughout our zone and internationally as well. And, and just keep in mind that it's just not service for service sake. It's a powerful example that, you know, local leadership is about giving back. And I definitely thank the Rotary Club of Winter Springs for allowing me to share this with them as well as these thoughts with you tonight. And with that, I end my report.
Commissioner Bruce?
There's nothing like losing a dad and so my thoughts and prayers are with Kevin and his family and his mom. And we will all be there for him, very, very sympathetic when he returns. Last week, I believe it was the 10th of June, I met with Cleat and Clifton. They gave me a two-hour tour of all the perk ponds. I understand a lot more now and it was fabulous to be able to spend some time with them, pick their brain. In addition, I'm doing some research behind the scenes on EV bikes, backflow irrigation preventers and pickleball tennis. Been getting a lot of insight from residents regarding pickleball and maybe some best practices, suggestions that I will be talking to staff about and then also bringing to the dais in the near future. In addition, on July 10th, there's going to be a solitude webinar in regards to algae. It's for, it's open to anyone in the United States and beyond. It's not just for Winter Springs, but I am publicizing it to let residents know if they want to come on this webinar just for informational, to understand more about it. And then in addition, on July 10th, I'm going to, myself will go on to a webinar regarding conservation and elected officials. And I've, as I've discussed before, I really want to make a program where we allocate funds and maybe it's some of the tree mitigation for preservation and conservation of, of lands so that they will not be developed. Because the only way to not have land developed is for us to purchase it. And that's my report.
Commissioner Baker?
My only thing is just sending my condolences to Mr. Sweet as well and that's all I have for tonight.
Deputy Mayor?
Echoing everything everybody said for city manager Sweet and his family, prayers for them. To the residents, toy, toy drives that are starting, I know Winter Springs and the Winter Springs Police Department is involved in those, so if you see any drop off boxes. Talking about Rotary, Rotary did give a portion of its donation to Shop With A Cop. So, you know, that's one of the great programs here in Winter Springs. I know it's early, but if we can get some families who are involved or anything like that for this year, Shop With A Cop would be great to do that. So on the creek cleanout, I think, and Brian, you can correct me here, there's been some confusion, you talked about online, but there's been some confusion because right now we are in the NRCS portion of the creek cleanout and they've given us specific locations. It is my understanding that once that portion of the creek cleanout and debris cleanout and sediment removal is done, then we're going behind them and finishing up the creeks.
That is correct. So just to be clear, the areas that are currently being targeted for the cleanup by Zulu, there was criteria that they had to meet under NRCS specific for Hurricane Milton in order to qualify through that funding source. So anything that is not specifically addressed, that was identified through the survey that was done, which is a requirement for NRCS, there, there is a, a desire from the city to send our own stormwater team through those areas and address any other lingering areas of the creek that are not specifically being addressed through NRCS as far as debris removal, if that makes sense.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Appreciate you clearing that up. I don't want to tell people. 4th of July event, I hope to see everybody there. I know I'll be there, family will be there, it'll be a good time. And then for, you know, we've heard several times from Ms. Leah, the ADA work, hopefully on her parks committee, that's what they're working on is the ADA plan. I know it's waiting for next year's budget, but I'll come in and talk with staff about kind of where we can help her out there. So that's it.
That's it? Public input. Ms. Benton, would you like to go first?
Sheila Benton, 414 Cedar Court. Fascinating conversation tonight. I have a big ask of everyone up there, of the five commissioners. You all give the appearance that... everyone up there, of the five commissioners. You all give the appearance that you're willing to write a check for everything. At some point in time, the citizens of Winter Springs need to hear what your priorities are. Like, for instance, you voted on a truck. I listened very closely to Mr. Short, Mr. Cleat back here, as he listed the trucks. But what I didn't hear him say was in February 2nd, or February 26th, 2024, this commission voted for a new truck and spent almost six, over $600,000. Now, I'm sitting here going, if the city needs it, that's great. But at some point, we, the taxpayers, need to hear where you all are going to draw the line. Because every time I come in here, there's another request for more and more money. And that is just deeply disturbing. Somebody's got to go, hey, this is the line we draw. I know budgets are coming up. I'm sure you will have those conversations with the city manager. I'm anxiously awaiting to hear what those, what that amount would be. Second thing, the second input that Commissioner Resnick talked about, that was installed because, for years, the commission meetings started at 5:15. There were multiple people who go out of this bedroom community to work. That's what Winter Springs is, a bedroom community. If the meeting starts at 5:15, you work downtown, you can bet you're not going to make it back here for 5:30, or 5:15 meeting. Just not going to do it. The second input was added so those people who were working had the opportunity to come in and speak to the commission. As far as a new business, new business was added because the commission thought they needed to add it. Now, you all can take it out. I don't care. It ain't my new business. I'm just asking for you guys to think about what you're asking us, the taxpayers. Because I know for a fact, I can sit across this whole dice. Come the beginning of tax season, millage rate is going up, and all that. The utilities will continue to climb. Everything's got a dollar amount. What y'all going to, where are you going to stop? You know, I have a budget at home. I'm sure most of you do, too. So, let's hear it, guys. As far as Mr. Caruso's comments, unfortunately, the five of you give the appearance that you need the one commissioner who has served the longest to give you directions. And that's how you come across, from the back of the room. So I suggest that if you don't want to give that appearance, maybe show a little independence and stop letting the one commissioner be the leader of the band. Leo Weisman, 113 Brookshire Court. And by the way, since I put that on a blue sheet of paper every time I speak, it'd be nice, since now this is on YouTube, I wouldn't have to say it. Okay, anyway. Second thing is, I don't know if it's legal with the tree, whatever, you know, but it would be nice if they had small areas, they could say, we're not tearing these trees down, and put a bench underneath it, and let the rain fall there. It's another place for the water to go to. Like, everyone's really wants that one big tree to stay there. Well, why, maybe the developer can say, that little corner there, we're not going to touch, and that's part of our payment. Is that little corner of the lot with that tree, so you can sit underneath it and then come to our business afterwards. So, anyway, just a suggestion, a way of paying for, instead of tearing more trees down, because those trees are big and they can't be replaced by new ones. The other thing is, I don't know where these facts come up, but you did not buy one of these trucks. And I asked what it was exactly. You, it's basically a huge vacuum. It'll keep our water from getting, you know, all the trash from a hurricane stuck, you know, making everybody flood. So I'm not sure why it's a, there's a truck, and there's a truck. That's sort of like saying, well, I have a car, and someone has a semi. They're not the same thing. It's going to keep people from flooding. And the problem we have flooding is because people never want to spend money on keeping up with things. I don't have a 20-year-old car. I never had a car that made it that long. Anyway, and I buy them, and I tell them, done. And I had a, oh, and the last point is, and I keep seeing this, and I'm like, I don't understand. Why one person calls another person out on things and then gets offended when they get talked back to. I prefer you guys not to talk to each other that way. Don't call names. I feel like I'm in high school again. Okay? So, there's a lot of accusations, but people forget that Mr. Resnick was the two-vote section with, with Ms. Bruce for all those years. So to say that he does not know what it's like is ridiculous, because he was squashed really bad. And the thing is, I only get three minutes, but I know for a fact that some of you took five to 10 minutes every time you spoke, and then are complaining that you don't have freedom of speech. So, last, if you want people to make sure, you could just get another monitor and put it up there, and just have that thing go all by itself.
Thanks. Why don't you just pass it down to Ms. Meyer? Why don't you just stay right where you are? There's a little change. No? Oh, I thought I, yeah, you know, yeah, right, get your blood flowing a little bit.
Karen Meyer, 741 Andover Circle. Regarding the VAC truck, the city hires very qualified people to be department heads. I appreciated the discussion about the truck, learning that we need this larger, newer truck for very, very assorted reasons. But my point I want to make is that if you hire skilled, qualified people to run your departments, then you're, I believe, are obliged to give weight to their opinion. You cannot, you cannot operate a city like it's a social club. It costs money to run this business. You've got to make choices, that's true. But you can't, you can't clean out the stormwater facilities, and you can't go into now managing the wastewater treatment plants and the water treatment plants without the right equipment. This, this issue about the new, the heading of new business, I don't know what the purpose of it is to have it on the agenda, but it is clearly stated that the city manager constructs the agenda. If someone on the dais wants to add something to the agenda, you are obliged to go to the city manager and discuss it with him. I don't see any reason for you to have a open discussion about you want to put it on the agenda. It's wasting time, and it's not what our procedure is. I adamantly oppose any restriction on end time for these meetings. You cannot compare our commission meetings to any other city. I don't know what they do. I don't care what they do. I know what you do. But I also know that if you want to shorten these meetings, you are the people that need to take care of it. You cannot go on ad nauseam about issues. The agenda is clear. Your comments should be about the agenda, and you should move forward. And lastly, I will say that I am tired of sitting here in the commission chambers and listening to this sandlot bickering. It doesn't have any place in our city government. I am tired of it. If you want to go outside and bicker among yourselves, that's fine, but do not subject us to that in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. We deserve that one. Anyone? Mr. Gallo?
Evening again. Art Gallo, 199 Nandina Terrace. Totally concur with everything Ms. Meyer's just said. The truck, well, we can talk about it, but you hired somebody that knows what he's doing. And yeah, we need to save money, but I don't think that's one place you want to save money, because it involves stormwater and a lot of other things. Concerning meeting times, oh, this is a favorite topic. I think this is at least three different commission meetings. I know I've done three data pulls on this. Just for info, tonight, at the first public input, it took 19 minutes. Consent agenda, no, skip that one. Let's see. The public hearing agenda took two hours and four minutes, most of it on 404. The regular agenda took an hour and 10 minutes. Reports 11 minutes. I was really concerned the first time this time discussion came up, because it was, let's get rid of public input, or let's really reduce public input. No, wrong. I agree, we have to, this is a democracy. It's not a monarchy. So, the only way we're going to get things done is we have to discuss, and we have to have a process to get through the discussion, however painful it is. But I don't want to see the discussion limited. Yeah, I agree. The founding fathers spent a lot of time to protect the minority. So, I don't also, I also don't care about what other cities do. I know the, the county commission, their meetings take an awful long time. So, we need to get the work done. And since we are a democracy, we need to hear the discussion, as painful as it may be. And just need to come up with a process to make it a little bit easier. Concerning Agenda Item 404, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I think we all have a bad taste in our mouth about that whole issue here. I think they had us over a barrel, because, like I said before, it was a poorly written document. And the thing is, that bothered me, and I'm not against development, no, whatsoever. What I am against is being made a sucker. And that developer, I feel like we're a sucker. And he took advantage of us, or they took advantage of us, and that's not right. And it, I think they should have done better, but they got what they want. I'll remember. And the last comment is, I don't have a problem with giving my address, because if people want to know where I live, there's a lot of ways they can find out. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anyone else that would like to take this last opportunity? Chief?
Uh-oh.
I've probably got a lot of eyebrows raised right now.
Yeah.
Typically, I don't do this, but you know who I am, Chief Track, 300 North Moss Road. I just wanted to end on some good news. Over my shoulder, Marrette Sims, our accreditation manager, Sergeant there, had some good news. She was nominated as a 2024 Accreditation Manager of the Year, and she was selected by the Commission for Florida Accreditation to receive that. So that is just awesome news, and we're excited. She's probably mad I'm up here talking about that, but let's end on a good, good note, okay?
That's great. Did you, yeah. Did you take the drive to celebration?
I did.
Wow, that's a commitment to your team. That's a drive, twice!
Hey, that's okay.
Meeting was on Thursday, and we were off, so he was there.
Oh, you do it all the way down? Twice. Wow. Congratulations. Seriously, that's a commitment to your team. That's leadership. Wow, rush hour? Yeah, yeah, thanks. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.